The Chair calls the Stanley County Board of Education on February the 4th to order. And the Chair would like to recognize, first off, and welcome all of you here tonight, and media, whoever else radios with us. And the Chair will recognize Mr. Jeff Chance for invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Stand with me, please. Oh Lord, we thank you this evening for your love, your care, and your mercies for your people. We ask for your discernment, your guidance, and all decisions made this evening on behalf of our students, staff, and parents. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chance. We have, first item on the agenda for consideration tonight is promotional video. And Dr. James?
I want to ask Hope Miller if she would. We have two videos for your viewing pleasure tonight that we've been working on to promote some of the things we're doing in our schools. Seems to be the problem getting out all the things we do throughout the community so people understand what is going on in our school system. So, hope you enjoy these two separate promotional videos that will be on our website tomorrow.
If we can get live. Okay, we're having some problems, hold on.
Hope, while you're waiting on that, we can go ahead and go to the next agenda item.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll just drop down to number four till Hope can get that, and she'll probably get it fixed about the time we get ready with the next one. Dr. James, you want to do the recognitions?
Yes, I want to ask Dr. David Stegall, Deputy State Superintendent, if you would join me at the podium, and Vicky Calvert. Dr. Stegall's here to help us recognize all the great things that have gone on here in Stanley County. And actually, Mark Johnson, State Superintendent, has awarded 18 of our schools for meeting or exceeding growth, and also the Early College for having 100% graduation rate for the past five years.
What an exciting thing to get to announce this evening. First, I'd like to recognize our achieving goal of expected academic progress for the 2018-2019 school year. Locust Elementary School. North Stanley High School. Stanley Early College High School. And West Stanley High School. Let's give these folks a round of applause. Our next award is that of 100% Graduation Club, and that is being given to our Stanley Early College High School. The next group we'd like to recognize are those that exceeded academic growth expectations for the 2018-2019 school year. First school I'd like to call is Albemarle Middle School. South Stanley Middle School.
I've had to reboot it, so we'll see.
So, we do appreciate the Deputy State Superintendent coming. He's got a busier schedule than mine to at least join us in our celebration tonight for all the great things that are going on here. We have 21 schools, so 18 of the 21 either met or exceeded growth, which is pretty phenomenal. And we've had several 100% free introduced lunch schools actually exceed growth, and that's just about heard of in the state. So again, congratulations for the hard work with our individual schools and all the people that made it happen. So that being said, I have two additional awards if Vicky will join me. Each year, school board members are required or asked to, if any way possible, to get 30 hours of training a year. So we have two of our board members to recognize tonight for accomplishing their 30 hours worth of participation in the School Board Association webinars, and of course, courses. We go to a lot of meetings during the year to stay up to tune on all the things that are required of board members. And of course, most people don't understand that until they get on the board. You have professional development that begins as soon as you become a board member. One of them is Ethics 101, one of the first classes required. And part of my job is to try to put together professional development for you so you can get those 30 hours. So hopefully, we can do some more of it here on site next year, so it'll help the other members get their 30 hours. So again, thanks to the board members, the two that we'll name tonight. Of course, Chairman Poole gained his 30 hours this year, and Ms. Vicky Watson. So I'm going to ask Tony Poplin if he would approach the podium. Value Teachers, if you remember last month, we recognized Life Changers of the Year, and I believe, Tony can correct me, but it seems like we had 18 Life Changers of the Year, and actually, got a call from the corporate headquarters. They're recognizing our district for the hard work that was put in to do that, and Tony's going to speak a little bit to that tonight.
Chairman Poole, members of the board, Dr. James, as I represent National Life and Value Teachers, Value Teachers is the largest marketing arm of National Life Group focused in the school business. So what we did last week, as Dr. James just said, we recognized 18 nominees from this district, which is pretty amazing. Because of that, National Life Group decided to award a special award for three school districts across the whole country. One in Indiana, one in Florida, and guess what? The Life Changer Award Program was designed to get the community involved. It's not about the school board or the school administration choosing people, like you do the Principal of the Year and whatever. This is to get the people involved in the community, parents, friends, relatives, coworkers, whatever. With those 18 nominees, that's pretty incredible. And as the nominees now, nominations are being evaluated across the whole country, again, National Life decided to make an award, a special award, this is the first year they've done this, for these three districts. And so, what I would like to do at this time, as a representative for National Life and Value Teachers, and as I always say this, as a proud alum of Stanley County Schools, I'd like to present a check in the amount of $500 to Dr. James and the Stanley County Schools.
Has Hope got this corrected?
So in lieu of video this evening, we're just going to chat with you. All right? Okay. So, thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to present about Oakboro Choice STEM School. It's been quite a journey. We are here this evening, if you don't know me, I'm Kelly Dombrowski. I'm the Principal of Oakboro Choice STEM. I've brought along with me Jennifer Snyder, our STEM coach, and Ms. Debbie Rolls, our instructional coach, and of course, the team that does the magic, our instructional team of staff, teachers, and leaders that help every day to work for our students. If you could see the PowerPoint, you would see we don't have any particular names as I've just given, because we've really approached this as a team effort. We look to make this no one person's celebration, no one person's failure, but everyone working together for the better good of our students. And we like to smile about it too, every now and then. So we're very happy where we have come from and where we are going. Our vision for Oakboro Choice STEM, you would see our name is Eagles, and that stands for our scholars are excellent, they look for acceptance, greatness, leadership, they are enterprising, and ultimately, they are successful. When students come to Oakboro Choice STEM, we talk to them about, you're not just a student, but rather, you're a scholar. How does a scholar walk? How does a scholar talk? How does a scholar display and hold and carry themselves? And so, you'll see on Fridays, our students wear uniforms because we want them to dress for success. That's our day that we show the work that we've been working towards, whether it be for a week or a unit, and they showcase those things. Those are also the days that they will present. And then, of course, if they leave campus, we want them to dress to impress, so they wear their uniforms off-campus. And we say to them, no one knows, no one has this shirt on that you have, so when you leave this campus, you represent this campus or this house, and you represent Oakboro Choice STEM. And they take that very seriously. Our mission ultimately is to grow excellence through STEM education. As we started on this journey, we tried to define what STEM was. We tried to say, well, it has to look this way or be this way. But at the end of the day, it's just good teaching. Everything that we do comes back around to a hands-on application, a real-world application, and because of that, our students love it and thrive. When I ask them, what do you like? That's what they come back with. The robots are cool, the gadgets are neat, but they like that hands-on application. They like collaborating with one another, and they like working with their teachers to see what works and what doesn't work, because success is not just, you did it right. It is the failure, and what do you do when you go back and try again? So, Oakboro Choice STEM came, we started with very little, and we've grown from there. We did a lot with paper towel holders, thank you very much, and the insides of toilet paper rolls, all kinds of things. It doesn't always have to be these expensive gadgets, and we took that and ran with it in the first year. Oakboro Choice STEM is a public choice school. Many people often ask if it's private, but it is public. Students can attend Oakboro Choice STEM from all over the district, and we're proud to say we have students that represent the four corners. And students can apply from grades three through eight. Kindergarten and first grade are mostly open enrollment, providing that there is space, and we will begin that here this week for the upcoming school year. Oakboro is not a transfer school. Oftentimes, people will mistake that as something that they can come to or move in middle of the year, and that is something that the board put in place early on, and it has been very good for establishing chemistry in the classroom and that collaborative unit that has been so key for their learning. And then, one thing that we were very excited about last year is that Oakboro grew 4.5 points, percentage points, by placing them in the top 10% of the state for growth last year in the 18-19 school year. So a little bit about our history. As you know, in February of 2017, we, the board voted to open the school, and in May, a principal was selected, and in March, the enrollment began, and then in August, we opened to 310 students. That January, 90% of our current students said that they, yes, they did want to come back, so we were very happy with that return. In 17-18, though, we were learning our way, feeling our way, and earned a D. And, you know, we took those knocks, and we said, okay, what can we do about that? How do we come from that? And in 18-19, bounced back with a 12-point difference for all EOG subjects, and as I mentioned, in science, grew in that 10%. Between 17 and 18, and 18-19, we moved to earn a C, exceeded growth, grew over 12 points, and moved Oakboro to the top 10% in state for growth. That has fueled where we are looking for this year, and I'm going to let Ms. Rolls share with you some of our goals that our team is working towards currently.
Yes, so we, I was fortunate to come on board last year as curriculum coach and had the privilege in sharing a lot of the successes that the school has experienced. And I'd like to send the message that good things are happening there, and they are, and I'm proud to be part of it. Currently this year, we just finished our MOI, our Middle of the Year Benchmarks, for the State-I/Station Reading Assessment. We increased our proficiency, our overall proficiency, from 23% at beginning of the year to 41% at the middle of the year. We have decreased our students who were two or more grade levels below grade level at the beginning of the year from 33% to now 11% at the middle of the year. So that was a great improvement. Sometimes you get addition by subtraction, so that was a gain by losing those students who were decreasing that percentage there. With our district, already data, looking at our reading, we've improved our proficiency in reading from 39% to 52%, just in the few short months that we've been in school. Our math, we have improved from 20% to 46% from BOY to MOY, so we're proud of the direction that we're headed. We have made 62% toward our growth for math, and 88% toward our end-of-the-year goal for reading percentage proficiency. So we're just proud of the direction that we're going, and it's all thanks to the hard work of the teachers who support us each and every day, and we're just proud to be part of that team. We do have a shared vision, school-wide, that eight is great. We'd like to grow eight points, and that's their motto. We say eight is great, nine is fine, and 10 for the win, so we just encourage that. And students keep track of their own data. They have their personal data tracking sheet, and teachers conference with them, so they look at their scores at the beginning of the year, set a goal for middle of the year, then teachers come back and conference with them again personally, review that goal, and then set one for the end of the year. So students take ownership of that. And not only are we growing their students, but we're growing their teachers as well. We had about half of their staff attend the STEM Conference in January. It was on a workday and right after New Year's, but they came out, and we went to UNC Charlotte and participated in the STEM Conference. And all of our beginning teachers and adult entry teachers have had the opportunity to do peer observations to help grow them professionally. So we are constantly growing as a leadership team, as a staff, and as scholars, and I'm proud to be part of.
So, in terms of the STEM component, we just submitted our application on Friday to hopefully become a school of distinction for the state of North Carolina. It is a very rigorous process. Average time in obtaining the certification is about four years. It is quite strenuous, and our staff has been working very, very hard on this extensive application. If anybody needs some somnia medicine, you can help, you can read it. But it's, a little more exciting than that. So they look at five different areas when they look at this application. They look at student opportunities, what clubs, what kind of opportunities in the real world do we give our students, classroom environment, is it mobile? Do they get to do a lot of different things? Do we move the classroom, or is it pretty stagnant? School structure, school culture, and community connections. And quite frankly, we wouldn't be here today without our community connections. What you don't get to see is the next slide, and it's just some pictures of our STEM community at the school. One of the things that we are most proud of is the fact that our students are the leaders. One of my favorite pictures is a picture of Ms. Dombrowski. She came into our eighth-grade science class, and they were doing chemistry, and they just, they went off and just explained every little detail to her, and I think she learned more about chemistry in that one lab than she has in quite a few years. We have a community garden. There's a picture of our first graders. Our teachers stay after school, late into the night. They did a whole astronomy thing over a month. They came back once a week each. They came back one night each week for a month so they could watch the moon phases. But with that, they integrated activities, and once again, our students stepped up, and they were the leaders. They taught their parents about the moon cycles and what was happening. Our older kids often mentor the younger kids. It is not uncommon for the middle-grade students to come down and read or mentor the younger kids, or help them with a project-based learning. And the little kids look up to the big kids, so it's quite, it's fun to watch. Some of our higher education partners, we work with a lot of our higher education. If it's in the area, we probably have a partnership with them. Our closest connection is to UNC Charlotte. We are part of a STEM PLC there that has given us a lot of great connections and resources. We've worked with Pfeiffer University, UNC Wilmington, Stanley Community College is another huge partner of ours, and Wake Forest Medical University is also another one that we work with. And some of our staff has been asked to present at a lot of other places. I think the most recent one is actually a little bit far for us, is the ISTI Conference in California. Not going to make that one. Some of our STEM partners, we work with STEM West and STEM East. Those are state partners, and they work with businesses on opposite ends of the state, so periodically, we make the road trip, but they give us a lot of great connections and a lot of great information and partners as well. We also do a lot of citizen science. What that means is our kids are contributing to the real-world science knowledge. The City Nature Challenge, hopefully, that will be something you guys hear about here in April, where we add to what we know about the biodiversity of Stanley County, and we compete against cities across the world. I think it was 200-some cities across the world last year participated. We also do March Mammal Madness, where the kids get a hands-on opportunity to look at diversity and natural selection and who's best at surviving, and the kids really get into that one.
And the teachers.
And the teachers. I'm beating her this year. The Globe Program is a weather-based government program. Again, they share data with students from across the world, and we can partner with classrooms in Europe, and Australia, and Asia, and find out what's the weather doing over there compared to over here. So a lot of great citizen science. And I think that's you. Okay, community support. Like I said, we can't do what we do without our community support. We are proud to say that we have raised over $40,000 in grants, and that's how we get all our cool toys. Whether it's our VR room, which we're actually nationally known for, our virtual reality and augmented reality, we're very proud of that. That came through a grant. All the robots that we have came through a grant. Stanley Community College just gave us a huge grant, and by the end of the semester, our middle-grade students are going to be building and programming their own lap pads. So, all that is due to grants, and we also got a grant for our officer.
Yes, very excited, because through all of this, our main focus this school year, when the Sit team sat down, was to talk about how much we've done as a community. And so, the tagline became "A Small Community Growing Big Thinkers," because everything that we do and have done has been through the gracious generosity, support of our community. And I like to say that it's not just the immediate community, it's the entire community as a county and as a whole. And so, this not only supports them with things, but also just the experience. We talk about the educational experience. We have greeters in the morning that, you know, open the door for students and come and welcome them from our church, the local church, First Baptist of Oakboro. We have the greeters and PTO who come from all over the county and program events for our students, so that there's more than just, you know, what they expect. They go bigger than that. And then, of course, this last, well, just now here in December, we received the Town of Oakboro and Stanley County Schools worked for the safety grant. of Oakboro and Stanley County Schools Work For the Safety Grant, and we now have our own resource officer, Officer Bryce from Oakboro Police Department, who now spends his days with us and has already started mentoring some of our students and, you know, rather enjoys the square pizza. And he's very much enjoying that. Community speakers, everyone that comes, they say, "When can I come back? What can I do for you? What are you speaking on?" We've gotten to know the exterminator man very well. He comes and we call him the bat guy because our first graders really love to hear him speak about that and his adventures.
And bugs.
Under the houses and above the houses. Our new student application will open February 10th. We are going to be a beta site where we actually are going to have our application online. And so, those of you who may be interested for grades three through eight can apply online now, which we're really excited to be that test. We will keep our application time open until the 20th of March, and we will have kindergarten night on February 20th for anyone that's interested in coming up in kindergarten. Our tours during our application period, something that we realized was that we can't just tell you about it, you have to see it, you have to experience it. So, we invite people to come on campus every Friday and tour our campus. Our students usually lead those tours and explain what their experience has been like and show what theirs can be. And we have found that very helpful for prospective families to see and learn about what we are doing each day. So, at the end of the day, we work very hard. We're going to, we are going to continue to work hard to build a culture of excellence because we are a small community, growing big minds. We are Oakboro. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You did well even without the video. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. You should have copies of January 7th, special call work session and the regular meeting, and also the January 21st work session. Are there any corrections or deletions, additions need to be made to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Let's hope that. Oh, okay. All right. I'll make a note of this, make sure she gets it. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Also, the special work session on January the 7th, Legislative Breakfast. I was in attendance at that meeting.
January 7th.
I think I was left off there. Yes, sir.
You were there.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you much. Right. Those annotations have been made and will be corrected. Anything else?
I don't know if I'll be able to string it.
Otherwise, minutes will stand approved as amended.
Okay.
Okay, we have to, I don't know that we have to, but we have the opportunity to appoint someone to the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. Says each board is invited to nominate one board member to serve on the committee. This individual should be nominated through a vote of the full board taken in open session. The person who is nominated must be able to commit to attend in both meetings. Once nominated, the person should complete the attached application form and return to School Board Association. Chairman Rebecca Howard, by 12:00 PM on Thursday, March the 5th. Can't draft anyone. Anyone volunteering? You volunteering? Anyone have a problem? Okay, all those in favor of Glenn, and we're going to lay it on you right quick. All those in favor of Glenn of doing this, say aye. Any opposed, no? You got the job. Thank you.
Chairman Pooh, I think Hope may have the videos ready. Be a nice break.
You got an agenda following along. This is back to item three.
I don't know now, I'm having to download it. Can they see it? Okay, because it wasn't, I'm not sure what's going on.
Hope, I have faith in you.
I have faith in me, just not the internet. Okay, now we're going to, we're going to switch something else.
Stone, a pillar of strength, a solid footing, a firm foundation for life. Stone, an unmovable base on which to layer pinnacles of success. Built on the bedrock of stone that rises from the Uwari Mountains to a beloved summit called Moro Mountain, Stanley County Schools is strong to the core. Like the rich rhyolite stone on which the region rests, Stanley County Public Schools is a natural resource, a steadfast cornerstone for families and students, offering an anchor of superlative education as a bridge to college and career opportunities. Stanley County School students rise from footholds based in guided and purposeful instruction and building of skills through training. Attention leads to preparation. Drive comes from focus. Determination expands from powerful motivation. Engaged students become trailblazers. Dreaming, seeing, feeling, doing, growing, exploring, achieving. Nurtured ideas lead to unlimited possibilities like stepping stones. New paths are forged from inspirations gained through focused persistence. Lifelong learners seize new challenges and reach new heights on their ascension to summits of success. Climbing, leading, inspiring others, giving back, becoming resident towers of strength that withstand the test of time. Strong as stone, students of Stanley County Schools are raised from and for firm foundations
It was worth the wait, Hope.
Stanley County is a beautiful county, and it's a place where my family and I call home. This is my 10th year with the school system, and I'm seeing our schools starting to offer more educational opportunities for all students.
I think one of the things that brought me to this county this year was just the opportunities that all students have, whether you want an international flavor to your education, or you want to be challenged as an AP student. If you can think it, or you can dream it, there's an opportunity in our county for you to do it.
I just think it's amazing, the opportunities that our students have in our school and the other schools of Stanley County.
Stanley County Schools offer each student a thought-provoking learning environment where students are incredibly well-prepared for their adult lives.
One of the things I really love about my job is being able to teach my kids skills that they can use in a job, right after school. And then I have a lot of kids that really are looking at going into some sort of aspect of the printing industry.
We make sure that they get opportunities that they may not have if they wouldn't be at our school. We want them to be lifelong learners. We want them to know more about technology whenever they leave West Stanley Middle. Those are things that all of my staff believes in, and we try to instill in our students.
Theater at West Stanley can offer a variety of things for a variety of students. We actually have classes for every age level, from freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Acting lessons can be anywhere from a couple hundred bucks to thousands of dollars. But you can get that for free, right here in our public school system at West Stanley High School.
Currently, I'm teaching a video production course where students can get certified in Adobe Premiere Pro, which is the industry-standard video editing software.
So, this year, in Stanley County Schools and Indy Elementary, we provided students with the opportunity to participate in a full immersion language program where students would be afforded the opportunity to learn a second language, Spanish, being in a 90-10 program. 90% of the instructional day would be in Spanish, and 10% of the instructional day would be in English. Kids have a great opportunity to learn a second language, participate in something totally new, and be grounded in cultural diversity.
And our focus at the early college is creating opportunities for students to earn both their high school diploma and their associate's degree at the same time. We partner with Stanley Community College. Our students can take, get degrees, transfer degrees in the associates of arts or science to go to a four-year university to finish their bachelor's degree, or our students are eligible to take up to 23 different programs that are offered through Stanley Community College.
As a coach and educator, I understand the importance of schools offering athletic opportunities to students. For many students, it's the desire to participate in sports or to play a sport in college that drives them academically. Students start to understand that academics and athletics go hand in hand. Our Stanley County Schools offer a variety of sports for all students, from football to wrestling, to swimming to track. They're opportunities for all students.
I want to thank all of the teachers, the hard work that's put into the programs we have, and we are constantly working with parents and the community to improve our school system. We welcome all parents to at least try what we offer, especially if you're a homeschool parent, but we're open to all students that reside in Stanley County Schools and want to have Stanley County School System be the best system possible. But I can assure you that if you can't find it here in Stanley, you cannot find it at
I only see one thing wrong with that video. I've never seen your desk that clean. You used to got paperwork stacked all over it.
Hope cleaned it off for the video.
Okay, next item up, calendar. Ms. Coward, this is yours.
So, I have two calendars to bring before you this evening. The first one I'd like to bring to your attention is the 2020-2021 Early College Calendar. If you'll remember, when you approved the traditional calendar for next year, we were still waiting on the community college to get their calendar passed or adopted so that the early college could then mimic their calendar to match the community college. So, that is the first one I'd like to bring to you tonight for approval.
Move approval. Motion by Mr. Mike and Dyer to approve Early College. Second by Mr. Chan. Any discussion or any questions for Ms. Coward? Okay, here and none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Thank you. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. The next calendar I'd like to bring to your attention is a proposed alternative calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. And it's very exciting to bring this to you this evening. And I have to tell you, the calendar committee met, and it's probably the easiest time we've ever had putting a calendar together. They were 100% on board and came up with this draft calendar that you see tonight. We essentially started with December, the last day before Christmas break. We started at that point and worked backwards so that we could be, ensure that we had first semester completed when the students go home for Christmas. So, on this calendar, you'll see that the student's first day would be August 4th, and the student's last day would be May 25th. Hope's pulling up a copy here. The only, something that's different that you see in this calendar are the, like, if you look at November 12th, you'll see it's highlighted in yellow and it's BK, that stands for break. It's, on those days, it's no school for 10-month staff or students. It's as if you took a day out of the summer break and put it in the school year. Because, you know, staff by law can only work 215 days, and this also has 180 instructional days for our students, which is a good thing. That gives us more instructional time.
You basically, for the whole calendar, you've added almost, I guess, a week back in, it looks like.
I think we're at, this year is 177 days, and now we'll have 180.
This is for a year out. You need a vote on this tonight, or this?
Yes, sir. I think we would like a vote, and with the stipulation, we may have to tweak a few days here and there, but in general, keep it about the same.
Everyone understand the motion? I won't restate it then. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Correction, correction. Discussion. Yes, discussion. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, and actually, we've had discussions. There were representatives from the early college on this committee, and there's a possibility that the early college, for the first time, could be on the same calendar as the rest of our schools. Yes. The college works with our early college. For instance, if the college is on a break, and they just don't have those classes, or vice versa, during our spring break, the college work, knows that our students won't be there. college knows that our students won't be there if they're on vacation. Yes. And this would be the first possibility that they could.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. And you will keep the board apprised if you need to make any changes.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to committee reports. Ms. Gibson, instructional program.
I believe that mine's going to be handled with, when Dr. James talks about the curriculum instruction further down on the agenda.
Under X, or under 10, okay. So is Mr. Graves? Got you fine.
All right, Chairman Poole, you have the minutes from our meeting. We did cover a lot, and I just wanted to give a quick overview of what we discussed. Mr. Bowers gave a presentation about West Stanley Middle School, DOT right-of-way. Basically, the MC DOT has requested a .75, excuse me, .753 acre parcel at an intersection there at West Stanley Middle School. And talked about this a couple times over the last year, where they put a new stop sign up there. There's been some concerns raised from members of the community about it's a dangerous intersection. So the purpose for the request is that the DOT wants to put a roundabout at that intersection of Running Creek Church Road and Bethel Church Road. So the committee, on a motion by myself and seconded by Ryan McIntyre, recommended that we bring to the full board for consideration that we donate less than a quarter acre of land at the intersection of Bethel Church, excuse me, Bethel Creek Church Road and Running Creek Church Road in lieu of the payment of $1,975 to the state of North Carolina for the purposes of creation of a roundabout at the intersection. So I'm not sure if we have to table that for a month, but that recommendation was made by the committee to bring and recommend to the full board to pass that.
Okay, we can deal with it. Since you brought it as a committee, it doesn't need a second.
Okay.
And so everyone has got that in front of you? Do anyone have any questions?
Chairman, I do.
Yes.
Just after you asked, Mr. Graves, did DOT give any specific reasons why they wanted to put a roundabout there as opposed to the current way in which traffic flows there?
Well, I believe I remember, but if Mr. Bowers wants to comment on that, I think I'll defer to him on that.
It was just like, you know, most of the, just to increase or accommodate the traffic flow, you know, so that you can keep the traffic moving. There have been, like Mr. Graves said, several areas there where we've had police officers have to sit there because people will run the, run those stop signs, that four-way stop. And a roundabout just moves traffic much faster than a, than a four-way stop. And so that's, and plus, with the schools, with the school being right there, it should help facilitate getting traffic in and out of that school, you know, much quicker.
Yeah, Mr. Chance, I had heard from several families that had children out there that would pick the children up, that you could get quite a backup at that road. And one told me that they had complaints with DOT, and they also had safety concerns. So I'm sure that may have factored into it as well. With a roundabout, you don't have to worry about people not stopping at the intersection. So I think it would probably have a significant impact on the amount of time people would have to wait at the end of the school day when they pick their children up.
Do they have a projected end date or finish date on this?
No, they did say they would obviously try to do this during the summer because of school. Now, you know, they're running into the same situation, I'll state entities are as far as the budget. So I don't know if it'll be this summer or next, but she did indicate they would be doing the job.
What we're really giving up is a little pie shape there that we're having to keep mode anyway, right?
Yeah. And they had asked if we would donate, and I mentioned it to the committee since, you know, the DOT has been very helpful to us in a lot of areas and providing funding for some roads for us. And they just asked if we'd be willing to donate it. And so I brought it to the committee to see if they would.
Mr. Lauder, do we need a deed or anything made up for that? I think you can handle that. Get your office back together. All right. Any other questions? If not, those in favor of the motion to donate that to DOT, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, Chairman Poole, we have another item here. Mr. Bowers reviewed, he gave us an overview of the 2019-2020 capital projects. And I believe that there is a spreadsheet attached. It's pretty detailed. And I'm not going to ask him to go over it because it was so detailed. But one thing that did come up in our discussion was the topic of a small team transportation purchase, small team bus. And there was some, there was some discussion around liability, insurance coverages, and things like that. So what we did was we asked Mr. Bowers to bring some of those options to the full board for consideration. And if he wasn't prepared to do that tonight, we didn't give him a specific date. But if he is prepared to discuss that tonight, we can do that. Otherwise, we could defer that to the next meeting. I'll leave that up to you.
Well, let me just give you a little bit of what I'm concerned about. I don't have, I guess, you know, all the data I might need. But the concern we have with purchasing some seven-passenger or SUVs or some 10-passenger vans is if there's an accident in one of those vehicles, the state will not be backing us. They will only support you if you're on a yellow bus. So if there's an accident in that, it falls strictly on our local liability. A lot of systems do this. It's not something unique to Stanley County Schools. It helps with, you know, small sports teams, wrestling, golf, things of that nature. It also helps with moving students between schools. McKinney-Vento, where we have to pick up, you know, a child may be out in the western end that goes to a school in the northern end. Those kind of things we could do without having to use a yellow bus. The one thing, you know, it allows you not, you don't have to have, if you use just a vehicle, is the person doesn't have to have a CDL license, obviously, because they're not operating a yellow bus. So it opens up more people that could, you know, drive these vehicles. Obviously, we'd have some standards, you know, some training or whatnot for who could or who couldn't. But the only reason we've not actually moved forward with it is I just want everybody to understand and come to an agreement that, you know, the liability now rests totally at the local level. The state will not be supporting us. The only thing they back you on is a yellow bus. And so that's why Mr. Graves asked in the meeting why we had not purchased them. And that's the reason we haven't. I just want to make sure everybody is comfortable, you know, with that information and with the fact that that's how it works before we move forward in that process.
We'd have to have separate liability coverage from what we have on normal buses.
We, yes. We have coverage now for the vehicles that we own. But I just want, you know, I think it's like $5 million or something. But again, you know, it's something we want to move up. Would it be something we want to raise, you know, put higher? I just want, I guess, some more input into what we want to do with this before I say, let's do it. Because, like I said, the liability is strictly at the local level when we do this.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question about this. I would like to know other counties that might be doing this, that would have, what they say about it, and if there has been a situation, what was the outcome of that situation? I think it's best to learn from experience. So if we could talk to some other people.
I'll be glad to do that. I know at a job-alike meeting I was at several weeks ago, and again, it's just that some counties were comfortable with it, some counties were not. You know, but I'll be glad to get some counties that are doing. I know there's some around us that have these vehicles and they do it. But then some of the other counties there just weren't comfortable doing it. So it's just a matter of where your comfort level is. We don't. Well, right now, sometimes in an athletic event, the schools will still at the moment are transferring. We don't, you know, we don't have these vehicles specifically for that. But, you know, obviously, sometimes if it's a one or two thing, they're getting one of the vehicles, you know, the cars that we presently have. Sometimes a school will request that to move the, you know, the students. So there's being done some now on a limited basis, just because, you know, the cost of a yellow bus, having to get somebody that's got a CDL to drive the yellow bus when you only may be moving two, you know, two students or whatever. So there's some of that going on now, not to the level it would be, obviously, if we buy four or five SUVs for them to have for just that purpose, you know, to move students, whether it's McKinney-Ventos, pick up McKinney-Ventos, whether it's small sports teams, whether it's transporting students, you know, between schools during the day because, you know, they take a class at a different school. That's, right now, we're moving with buses. But some districts do it the other way. Some districts, you know, do it with seven-passenger SUVs or a 12-passenger van. It's just something, you know, we, as a board, I guess, something we need to talk about more as a committee and get some more information to you. He does, you know, Mr. Graves wanted to know why we have not done it. That's why I have not done it.
Well, yeah, and I want to just follow up on that. I want to be very specific. I did not want anything done until the board could get a recommendation from the superintendent and even our attorney. I think this is, I think this is serious, potentially. It's a risk to the county, and I want the board to make a decision on that. That would be my preference. So when we get some more information on that, which I hope to get in next month's committee meeting, then I'd like to bring that before the board and get the board's opinion.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. Yes, sir. Very quickly, capacity. Oh, by the way, we also asked, Ryan requested an update on the Albemarle High School auditorium remodeling timeline and cost. Mr. Bowers, if you wanted to just mention that real quick, because I know a lot of people are curious about it.
We haven't moved on that also. Just one reason being on that, the, I think, the number we estimated was going to be considerably less than what it will take. I had someone come in just to look at the seats, pulling out the seats and reupholstering or replacing the seats. And just that alone is about $110,000. And so everything else, we're going to be looking at close to $300,000 probably to remodel that auditorium. And so I just haven't done that this year because of, you know, we were going to be considerably lower. It was something that I wanted to wait till the next budget year to make sure that this was something we wanted to go forward with. Because, and I realize it's probably going to get more expensive, but, you know, like I was telling them in the meeting, I've told Dr. James, if you've had anything done, at least recently, construction costs are just astronomical. I mean, everything is just going through the roof. And so that's the reason that's not been done. If you see the item and wonder, that's the reason it's not been, we've not pursued it right now, just because of the cost.
Yeah, thank you. Chairman Poole, two things real quick. I had requested, we had a discussion about capacities, where Mr. Bowers presented some capacity information. One of the things that came out of our discussions around capacities for the schools, specifically, we're talking about school capacity, was the fact that the numbers that we were using, I believe, were based on figures that were over a decade old. And what they did not account for was the fact that depending upon the type of classroom that you have, is it a kindergarten, first grade, second grade, et cetera, the maximum number of students changes. So it does have an impact on the overall capacity of a school, which was never reflected or discussed in any conversations over the last five or six years with respect to capacities. And in addition to that, we have these, the state mandates that are coming up. So I know it's not the last time that we're going to talk about it. I wasn't, I'm not able to find out if Mr. Bowers is going to be prepared. But we had asked, they were going to go out and do some recalculations based on the inclusion of AMP classrooms, ECA, and other additional room needs to present tonight. But if he's not prepared to do that tonight, or Chairman Poole, if you'd like to defer that to maybe next month's meeting, I'm perfectly happy with that. And then I have one item after that.
Okay, go on to your next item.
Okay.
Hold on that.
Go ahead.
Chairman Poole, I have a presentation, but it's intercurricular. So at that time, I'm going to put up the capacities, the rooms that we need, et cetera.
Dr. James is going to do some presentation on the capacity stuff, just a little bit.
Okay, great.
Okay, go on to your next item.
The last thing, the last thing was that the committee asked Dr. James to begin gathering information. Initially, some estimates on the cost for not only remodeling some of our existing facilities, but new construction as well. Specifically, we gave them some figures around high school and middle school capacities that we wanted to see, and also for new construction costs. I just mentioned that now because we will be presenting that in a future meeting. So he's doing the preliminary work on that now. And I'm eager to get that information in the coming months. And that's all I have to say, all I have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Thank you.
Finance, Mr. Chev Chance.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to Mr. McIntyre, if I could, please. I was absolutely against that.
Yes. At our January 22 meeting, we discussed the tuition waiver. This would mean us waiving tuition, and we would recon, look at how that affected for out-of-county students. Let me clarify that. We would be waiving the tuition for out-of-county students for one year. However, we would just revisit it after one year. We're not saying that it would just completely be reinstated after that first year. We would revisit that and see how it was working out. And any students that came during that time would be grandfathered in should the tuition come back. And this was approved through committee to bring to the board.
Anyone got any comments or questions on this? There's a motion for the board to do a tuition waiver. That's for out-of-county students. And what's that, what's that amount right now?
About 1347. And of course, all the other stipulations still apply. There has to be capacity at the school, et cetera. So it's just not cart-block. So the school has to be open for additional students. And of course, in county, students always have the first seat that's available.
And just to clarify for everyone, I will read the actual motion that Mr. Graves had. The committee recommended that Stanley County Schools, beginning this upcoming school year, waiving tuition for out-of-county students. If that waiver is canceled, the students that registered during the free tuition period would remain eligible for free tuition if they remain in the school system without leaving.
I'm not going to reread all that. Does everybody understand the motion? Everybody, everybody got the motion on that? You want me to reread it again? Okay, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
I know Dr. James had given some additional information as to the reason behind doing this. And so we could have addressed it in the first.
Well, what we, of course, it's, since I've been here, there's always been an argument about the fact that we have seats available. So we one time had a capacity of about 10,000 students. We still have those same schools. So we're at about 8,400. The, I guess, the students leaving has slowed down graciously. Actually, last year, we gained 100 students. So in doing that, we wanted to make sure that we were afforded an opportunity to those parents out of district. We currently have about $50,000 in tuition costs. That would equate to about five students enrolling with us from out of district. Locust, early in my tenure with the board, called me out for a meeting to show me the housing developments that were going on in Locust. There, and I'm sure Scott Effer or someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but there's like 2,700 homes on a plat. That's Cabarrus and Stanley. And one of the concerns that Locust had was, we drive a bus down a street in the county. One side of the street is Stanley, the other side's Cabarrus. Those parents are driving as much as 10 miles to go to school. So Locust asked, if any way possible, to consider that. But of course, you know, if we're going to way possible, to consider that, but of course, you know, if we're going to open it up, my recommendation is for the whole county. We also have parents that consistently are looking, and every parent should, for the best education possible. There are some surrounding counties, I have talked to the superintendents in those surrounding counties, let them know that we possibly could be voting on this tonight. And I think, you know, hopefully, my guesstimation would be at least 50 students will gain by dropping tuition, if not more. So, economically, it helps us fill up some empty seats throughout our schools, but I'm also going to be talking about capacity later on.
Go ahead.
So, what was the overall response from other school districts, our surrounding school districts, superintendents there that you talked with, and they are aware that we're going to be doing?
Well, Cabarrus County has so much growth, they would welcome anything we would do to take some of their students because they can't build schools fast enough. So, they really, really didn't have a concern about it. Talked to Montgomery County, and of course, being a county with a lot of poverty, there's always concerns if you lose students there, but they're already having parents elect, just like we are, to go to charter schools and other places, so it's, we're just offering another opportunity. If they're not going to, if they're not going to come over to us, then they're probably going to go UAR charter, which I would tell you probably wouldn't be the best option. So, being on the EDC, I'm hopeful that there's going to be economic development in the southern part of the county that will actually increase, in my opinion, enrollment for both counties since, and let's just face it, Montgomery is opening up a brand-new high school next year, so some people are just going to go to the, probably leave us to go to Montgomery just because they have a brand-new high school. So, unfortunately, you have people who are going to do that for the aesthetic value of the school and, you know, new opportunities there, hopefully, in their mind. So, we trade students back and forth, and as superintendents, we have a gentleman's agreement to accept that. So, legally, could we deny a student from going? Absolutely. Then they would take us to court, and by the time it got done, they would go anyway. So, it's just one of those gentleman agreements to keep from bogging down the parents and creating a lot of minutia and doing what's best for kids. But, and I talked to Anson County, and of course, Anson's a very small county. They've already had a charter school set up in Anson. Of course, Michael's a good friend, and he said, "Well, you know, it does bring some concerns, but I understand." But again, every county charges something different. There's no rhyme or reason. We actually charge, the maximum you can charge is the per pupil allotment from the county. So, ours is about 1340. Most counties that I've talked to are around $600, $800 unless their county is at capacity. Then they raise the tuition to slow down the incoming students from other counties because they, they can't afford to build schools that they have. And if we were full, I wouldn't suggest this because we're not getting tax dollars from those individuals coming in. We're just getting the $8,500 amount that comes with the student to educate, so it does provide additional resources for our students, or our classrooms, sorry.
And that was historically, part of the reason this stayed in place was because we were pretty much maxed out at one times.
Absolutely. When we were maxed out, it would not behoove the taxpayer here to accept anyone without paying tuition. And again, the most you can charge is the per pupil funding, local per pupil funding. So, there's even a maximum you're limited to that you would not recruit the tax dollars if we had to build schools. So, as we grow, which I'm pretty sure we are, as we grow and head towards capacity, then there's times, there was, be a time we'd have to revisit that.
Mr. Chair, just looking at the math, and I guess anybody can sit there and do that if we brought in 53,000 for paid tuition this year, and you are, yeah, I know you just threw out 50 as the number that we could possibly anticipate, that's $425,000. So, that's a good bit over. I think it's a great idea. I do have a question, though, for clarification. So, those students that would want to come in, I would assume that they would come to the school closest to their district. They can't just choose where they're coming, right? Just?
They have to apply for transfer requests through the transfer process, and then we would look at the schools that are open. So, we do have, of course, we do have out-of-county students that do occasionally want to pick their school, but after we look at capacity numbers tonight, I think the board's going to direct me to start putting some caps on enrollment. So, especially in two years. Tonight's not a problem, and probably next year, but the following year, we're going to have some capacity concerns. So, we're just trying to, again, fill up our seats, make as much money as we can based on the current school budget situation. So, it brings additional money in. It doesn't cost, that number goes into the $400,000, if we gain it, goes into to help the whole county. So, it's additional money we're bringing in to help offset some of the burden on our local budget.
One thing that I do think we probably need to clarify in this is, I know we're not going to reinstate tuition for anyone that comes to Stanley County Schools during this time period, if tuition's reinstated. However, we also need to consider those that are already here, that will then, you know, have their tuition dropped, you know, by staying here. You know, we need to make sure that the way we do this, their tuition's not reinstated.
Yes, I would apply it to all out-of-county students, whether they're currently with us or wanting to come.
I have another question. I guess I have a concern more than a question. I could, I could visualize and see, especially at the high school level, if we require no tuition, that sports teams' coaches are going to be recruiting from a surrounding county, if possible. I mean, that's, so then we recruit from a surrounding county. And I mean, I know, I mean, think about it. I know that's, that's going to happen. So, is that what we want? Or are our students, I mean, to know that others in surrounding counties can come here for free and play on our sports teams and take the spot away from our Stanley County students?
Well, they're already doing that. So, we already have out, we have to investigate, every year, we investigate numerous, and I would tell you, it's harder to prove than it is not to prove. So, it's occurring already, and it does happen, and of course, it's against North Carolina High School Association rules. There are certain things that we have to look at, but again, that would be one of those things we would have to, the transfers would be done just like they currently are. They have to go before a transfer committee, and then you have to, the committee has to prove them or not, and if the committee thinks that they're coming in just for being recruited, the committee will deny it then. Then, of course, they can always appeal and come to the board. Then you'll get the backstory, and if you fill us a board, they're coming just to be recruited, then you deny it, and that's the end of story. So, there's stopgap measures in place to prevent recruiting from happening, and I would hope that if we have individuals that are doing that, that we can put some things in place to discourage them from doing so.
Well, by your motion, you're going to be looking at it at the end of the first year anyway.
Yeah, so you can, all you have to do is the board's just reinstate it, but again, it's all going to go through the transfer process, which is a committee that looks at it, and one of the criteria in the committee is, one of the denial factors is that you're being recruited for sports. So, the actual first committee, first layer, can look at it, and if they feel like, again, and all of a sudden, if we start getting athletes from some of our Mount Pleasant, then it's pretty obvious to us, if we have five athletes all of a sudden apply to come to our county, that something's going on, and at that point, we would definitely investigate it, or any other high school. So, again, the transfer committee has every right to deny that based on the criteria the board has set for them, and you cannot get a transfer for athletics into our county legitimately. Now, you can say it for many other reasons, so, but then, if it gets by the committee, then the board can also, because we'll submit to you the ones that were approved, and you have all the paperwork with them to say, "Well, there's five here that I question that look like they're going to be athletes coming from out of county, and let's get some more backstory on them," and the board has every right to deny those. So, the only the ones going to get in are the ones that the board approves through the regular transfer process. And it is pretty tedious. I mean, you can't just apply to us and get in cart block. So, if we didn't have those stopgaps in place, I would, I would be concerned about that. And I know Beverly does an excellent job screening all those, but each year, we have to deal with it, and like other counties. So, I hope that answers your question.
Didn't do a wave of concern, but I know, I'm a little bit on that same wavelength because we've had to deal with that issue in the past. I mean, and you're right, it has happened over the years. Okay, well, the high points here are that you're going to look at it again in a year and evaluate it, so it's not going to be a permanent thing unless it becomes permanent. So, okay, if there's no other questions, we'll call a question, and those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, motion carries. Is that all on finance?
Dr. James did provide a ESS report or update. Not sure, do you, would you like to go into that?
Well, the ESS report's on some 17, 18 pages. We do have an updated copy for you. It should be at your location with a table of contents and page numbers. And the ESS, I think we're actually up to 59 full-time employees that, they work for us, ESS hires them, so the savings there is about $3,000 an employee, and it's not, again, let me make this very clear, it's no current employee that we have pushed over or told they had to go to ESS. It's new people that are hired because people that are currently on the state retirement system, we're going to ensure them that they want to retire with the state, we're going to do everything to make it possible as long as their job performance and duties are fine. So, again, ESS has hired 59 people, so that's a savings of $3,000 each, and here's where the savings comes from. When they hire someone, the state retirement system and FICA cost us about 27.5% of a person's salary. So, we save, and then, so what happens is, we sort of trade off with them, it's about a $6,000 savings, and we split that difference with them because the person also gets a pay increase. If they go to work for ESS, it's $2 to $3 more an hour than what we can pay, and they also provide their insurance and a 401K program. At some point, unfortunately, I think we'll see it as, some of the board members may be retiring off by then, but I'm not sure, but it may happen next year. But the state of North Carolina's made it very clear, treasurer Fowle at the state has made it clear that the state retirement system is going to change, and we've been told by 2021, 2022, the TSEers for teachers, as we know it, is going to have to change because of the unfunded amount of liability there. So, we're hearing that the state itself is going to a 401K in the next two to three years. Those of us that are currently in it are grandfathered in and will continue, but as, again, they start new employment, that system will not be open. So, again, this is another way to provide our employees more money and an opportunity to come through ESS. Plus, you can also work dual jobs. You can work for us up to 40 hours and then work for ESS up to 40 hours. So, there's numerous benefits, but when we started with them, we had some significant attendance issues with our certified staff, and we were averaging about 18 or 19 absences per teacher, which was about twice the national average, about nine to 10 days is about the national average. So, they have done a great job of pulling out leave, professional development, and getting it down to an actual absence. So, when we reviewed the data, we have six, around 667 teachers, it, you know, it may be plus five, minus five. But you divide the number of absences we've had so far this year, and we're actually down to about four, four and a half per teacher, and we actually have one of our strategic goals, and if, you know, public wants to look on the website, we do have a five-year strategic plan, required by law to have that. So, one of our strategic goals is to improve teacher attendance. I just recently sent the teachers out a great national article about the impact of teacher absences on student achievement. It's significant, so it's very important to have a teacher here, and we're not talking about leaves, FMLA, we pull all that out of the numbers. What we did notice is our paraprofessionals, or where we're having our, most of our absences at, so that's an area that we weren't focused on, so we'll have to have those conversations. But it, the state does not, when a teacher's out, the teacher gets paid through a sick day. If they take a sick day, the state pays for the teacher. They do not give us the money for that teacher's sub. They give us a pool of money that is about 15 or 20% of the cost of that sub. So, what that does is when people are absent, the biggest part of that cost is borne by the local budget, and if you have a lot of absenteeism, you're going to consume your budget. I can tell you that we budget about $1.4 million for teacher absences in our budget, 1.4 million. So, if we could cut that in half, I'm sure the board would have $700,000 we could look at significant teacher supplement increases. So, again, we're paying that out of local budget, so it cost us. The state does not give us that money. And if you think about it, divide that by $60,000 for salary and benefit for a teacher, and there's additional teachers or TAs that we could put in the classroom. So, we've had great conversations with teachers, it has improved, appreciate all the support. It's just continuing to improve our absenteeism so we can take that money savings and putting it back into classrooms and additional teacher assistance and other things we need. But so far, we've been happy with them. We are getting some more specific numbers on what they charge us for a sub versus what we would have, but they, you've got to remember, they also take workers' compensation, the liability of that, the AESOP system we use, so there's about five other things that adds to what we save on when we use them to hire from us. We still do try to hire internally. If it secures state retirement, we try to do an internal hire. So, we try to help people stay on the state retirement system in all possible ways. So, we do have a scheduled meeting to talk about with Todd and his individuals, talk a little bit about trying to provide bus monitors and custodians as we go forward. But again, anyone that's currently in our system doesn't have to worry about it. They're going to stay in our system unless they choose, and of course, it opens up an opportunity for dual employment. We have a lot of people doing that.
I think that's, that's all for that. First nail, Ms. Watson. Policy, Ms. Crump.
No report.
Okay, Dr. James and Ms. Gibson, anything from legislative resource? We don't have a budget, we all know that in the state. Anything else?
Ms. Gibson, you got anything? I do have several things to, of course, we don't have a state budget, and I will tell you that we did have a legislative breakfast, it was a good breakfast, I see one of the people that's running in here in the room with us. One thing that fits under the Learning Resource Network is the Leandro case. No matter what politicians may think about it, here's how it's going to impact our state. For 26 years, we have had the Leandro case, and it's over school funding and the inequity in how we fund school system in North Carolina. Here's where it becomes a legal issue and a constitutional issue. The state of North Carolina is one of very few states that guarantees every child a sound, basic education. No one could tell you what that meant. So, for 26 years, the court system, Supreme Court of North Carolina, has dealt with the legislature, school systems, and they both, the plaintiff and defendant, agreed to have WestEd, which is a huge resource organization that does research in military and in the public sector across the world, has worked on this for two years, so they have developed what a sound, basic education is, and there's eight tenets to that law. So, we're closing in on defining what a true education will be in the state of North Carolina, which I think it's going to be paramount to moving forward, but one thing that, there's eight things they brought out, having a highly qualified teacher in each classroom, and we all know through Bill and Glory Gates, you guys have been involved in that and heard it many years, they spent a billion dollars to try to figure out how to improve education, and in that 10 or 12 years, they found out the most important thing in a child's life and the quality of education would be the teacher. The quality of that teacher is paramount to what that kid gets. Well, second to that is a principle, and leadership matters, not resources. You can pour a ton of resources into a building, if you don't have a good leadership or a systematic process in that building, you just poured good money on top of bad. One thing we've done, and proud of the board, we have a very systemic process here on how we do things. We put processes in place for everything we do. Again, look at our strategic plan. The finance system that we currently have in the state is not adequate. The courts, Leandro, WestEd has ruled that we're about a billion dollars a year behind in education. You don't have to tell us that, they're educators. We can argue about cuts or not, but I did email an individual, and yes, we were cut teacher assistance, and I have it in black and white, and I have the PRC code from the state. We were cut $1.2 million between '13 and '15, two years, in teacher assistance. It says, PRC 27, teacher assistance, it's a state budget code, cut $1.2 million. That's 40 jobs that were cut. Don't care what anyone else says, we were cut 40 teachers. Assessment accountability, here's one thing that I'm excited about, because a one-time shot at the end of the year to determine how well a kid is, to me, is one of the worst systems there is. Our kids learn. Our kids learn through many different modalities, and to hold them to one test is crazy. So we were part of a pilot, North Carolina was. There are seven states approved by Betsy DeVos for flexibility and assessment. Well, there's already about eight states that WestEd reported out in their report to the legislature and the state that have multi-facet systems in place to determine how great we're doing as a school system. You know, graduation rate's a big part of that because you have a bad graduation rate that's costing the community and taxpayers heavily. So they put multiple measures in to determine how well a school system's doing. So I'm pretty excited about that because finally, we're being heard that it's more than just the EFC or EOG at the end of the year and how well you done. Some kids do not test well. That doesn't mean, you know, Bill Gates dropped out of high school. The last time I checked, he's a billionaire. So assistance and turnaround, so low-performing schools to come up with a way to do that. I actually think there's a way that I told our legislators that's free. There's a lot of us here that care so much about kids. If you'll just ask us to meet in like a regional education consortium, we'll sit down and do the work. But the problem is DPI took that work out of our hands, and we've not been allowed back in that room. So we have the mess we have because teachers were left out. And like me, they would be glad to go to multiple meetings to help develop a better system. The other one is early education, and I will tell you that will nothing take the place of that. And as I presented to the city council about poverty, four of our most high-poverty schools are in the city system. And you've got to have early learning, and there's tons of research. The earlier you can start a child into the education system with a great teacher, great system, the more we can close those gaps between the have and have-nots. And of course, lining up what we do with the community college, and we're trying to do that at light speed. So again, those things were put out, and you know, the legislature can say the courts have no authority to enforce this, but there is a state constitution. So once the definition has been put out, and it has, as a legislature, you're required to uphold the state constitution. So again, we have finally defined what a sound, basic education is, and it's these eight tenets. So looking forward, as we move forward as a state, to have some conversation. But I will say for the general public, never before we ever went without a budget. This is the first time in history. There's nine hundred and sixty million dollar surplus from taxpayer, tax dollars that we paid in this year sitting in a bank account. I don't know if it's drawn interest or not. But in two thousand and eight, we were owed seven hundred and thirty million dollars across North Carolina from excess fines and forfeitures. We have yet to be paid that, any school system in the state. And there's some talk about repaying it, but without interest. And I'm sort of like some of the board members. Seven hundred and thirty million dollars since two thousand and eight at a going rate of interest, I think we're probably up to a couple billion dollars. We also have one point four billion dollars in a rainy day fund. So it's a travesty not to have a state budget, and I can tell you what it's costing us locally. We were on track to probably be over two million dollars in fund balance locally, local taxpayers. This budget is costing us somewhere between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars out of our local budget. And so that's when you need to get upset and start calling Raleigh and ringing the phones. It's costing us locally. So my hopes are that we can get county commissioners across this state and other engaged taxpayers to tell Raleigh it's time to stop playing games and to give us a budget and take care of our kids. So at that point, I'll stop.
One quick thing, if we drop back to facilities just a minute. On this land, we have that thing in place. We're supposed to get the commissioners to write a refusal on everything, so that needs to be run by them before that can actually be consummated. We slipped up on that one time before, and I just realized that we didn't do it this time. Talk about that. With that, the Chair is going to declare a five-minute recess. We've been at it for about an hour and forty-five minutes here. Dr. James, you want to address item ten?
Yes, Chairman Poole, Lynn Plummer's in the room. And he has a presentation. He's going to come up and talk about Montessori, and he's also going to talk to us about e-learning. So we turn it over to Lynn.
Good evening, Chairman Poole, members of the board. First off, Montessori. We have had a lot of interest from a group of parents in mainly the western end of the district that has been very interested in starting a Montessori program at one of our elementary schools. So Dr. James tasked us with going further and looking into see what it's all about. Is this something we can do? What are the possibilities of bringing this to fruition for these students? So one of the parents and several district leaders went to Park Road Elementary, which is a Montessori school in Charlotte Meck. They did a visit, got some ideas together, talked a little bit, came back. And then we went on a second visit. Ms. Calvert, Vicky Watson and I went to Park Road Elementary, did some observations through the school, just to get, talking to the principal, talking to the teachers, talking to students, just to get an idea of how that would fit in. What would that look like? How do we see that looking? How do we see that going here? So the more that we've talked, it is a lot like the personalized education we're starting to see in a lot of our elementary schools. But it matched a lot with what the ideas of the STEM school and what Oakboro has going on. So our thought is that we would progress forward and look and see what Montessori would look like as a school within a school model, not Montessori taking over the STEM school, but the school within a school model and starting a program for Montessori at Oakboro STEM School. So that next year, school year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, we open it up to start a kindergarten program. Those kindergarteners move up to first grade, bring kindergarteners in. The idea of not going fully ahead with doing an entire school to begin with is just the foundations and principles of Montessori are really stuck on the early childhood components of it. Everything builds on those first years. You set the norm of the classroom, you set up what education is. And the more they get into a different idea of education, a different type of classroom, it really skews that thinking along the way. So we have looked at doing that at Oakboro. Ms. Dombrowski is not here. She hosted a Montessori parent interest night last week so we could have parents come just to see what is the turnout? How many parents do we have interested? We had about eighteen parents there that night that showed an interest. We captured their emails, we captured their questions. She did a good job showing videos, giving an overview of the program, giving an idea of what it looked like. Parents asked questions more than anything, just so that it would give us an idea of what types of things we need to think about moving forward. So she has hosted that night. I've had several parents in return reach out to me saying, we are interested in moving forward. What do we need to do? How do we get our names on the list? Talking with Dr. James, our next idea is to bring forth a second parent interest meeting to see now that you've heard about it, who is definitely on the line to say, we're ready to confirm that if this program comes to fruition, we do want to enroll our students here so that we have a little bit more of an idea. We don't want to end up having four students that are interested and putting all of that into a program that may not build the way that we envision it potentially building down the road. So our hope is to work with Ms. Dombrowski, get a second parent interest meeting going before their kindergarten registration, which is February twentieth. So if we can do that, and then those students come back on the twentieth to go through the typical registration process, just as they would with Oakboro STEM, being able to have an idea then of how many students we're looking at so then we can start building ideas around allotment for teachers, where we're going to place them, where the program will be housed within the school, materials, setting up the classroom, that type of thing. But Elliot Brooks did add our Q and A document that we took from that night, and it's on the district website. I've also emailed it to each of the parents that was there that night just so that we can start a question repository, more or less. As questions come, people have ideas, people have things they're interested in, want to know more about. We can add that to that to build capacity there so they've got somewhere they can go to for those answers. Questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Plummer, are any of those parents that were there that night, other than the ones that really wanted?
There were parents there, in all honesty, that I would say were not quite sure completely what Montessori was all about. Was not completely sure on what the philosophy was. They were just interested in what other opportunities and ideas were there. So I think they were looking for ideas. We have not captured yea or nay from everybody yet at this point. But I feel certain there were a lot of people that did have that interest that now kind of think this is a good progressive way of looking and built an interest as they were there.
Mr. Rafferty, do you have physical space enough to handle the program?
I think it will certainly depend on the numbers. We do have a spot that we currently use for art and music right now that could let itself do to the space of the classroom.
Hold on one second. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chen, your question, what would the answer be? I can't quite hear that.
There is available space at present. It would be dependent upon the numbers.
Right, so did I hear that if we gave up an art room and a music room?
Correct.
Would you do it?
Correct.
Okay, so, well, I don't even know if that's a starter. I'm looking at the board members. I don't think they would want to give us an art room and a music room, considering we've been raising a chain about that for last year. But that's just my opinion.
Any other questions?
Speaking of that, where would you move those folks currently using the space? Do you have places for them to go?
And that would all depend on the numbers, even in our enrollment, to see where our classroom capacities are. This year, we were able to use certain classrooms on the upper hall. And so that is something that, once we come to that point, we would have to look at. Certainly want to have a designated spot for that.
Thank you.
Do you think that that's it, or whenever you have a second meeting? Wonder if someone could come from Park Road?
I will say, we've been in contact with them. I'm sure we could get the principal from Park Road Elementary to come out. Ms. Dombrowski has talked to her several times just about the logistics of the school and how things are run, how things are set up and looked. The good thing about her, she's not only the principal, she's also a Montessori parent. So she's been there for several years herself, so she sees the parent side of it, and she sees the school side of it. Good idea, though, I like that.
I will say that my wife and I were one of the sets of parents that were just unsure because this upcoming year will be Raleigh's kindergarten year. And we were very impressed and excited about the possibility of this coming to Oakboro or wherever we decide to put it. And I will say, you know, you guys presented a lot of great information. I think that we probably learned a lot from each other, you know, parents as well. And I found particularly interesting was the parents that were there that had the child that had already been in Montessori, that had came back. I believe he was in Locust now and had teachers, principals, other parents just bragging about how respectful he was. And even the teachers talking about how far ahead of the game he was when he came back into like a regular classroom from the Montessori setting. So my wife left very impressed. I'll leave it at that. So I appreciate y'all's presentation there. And I will say, I think this is an opportunity. We were talking about bringing people in from out of county, I mean, as far as transfers. I think this is the opportunity to bring a lot of folks in who are thinking about homeschooling their kindergartners. I know several of those there that I think were either on the fence about, am I homeschooling? Or are you going to have a Montessori program? So I think that's another opportunity to offer something.
I'd like to say, when I went with Mr. Plummer, I was very impressed. You know, respect is something I think is very important for our students with the way the world's going now. And I would love to see it in some of our other schools. You know, we got to start somewhere. But I was very impressed with it.
So you're having another meeting when?
It is not on the calendar yet. We're working with Ms. Dombrowski to get that on there, hopefully before their kindergarten registration opens on the twentieth of this month.
I will, I would like to ask maybe even Dr. James. We probably just need a timetable on when we're going to say yea or nay because I know, given Ms. Dombrowski and Lynn, everybody timed the plan for this. You know, it's not something we wanted to have to throw together at the last minute by any means.
I think our plans were to get a yes or no from the parents the next meeting we have so we'll know. We're asking to have at least twenty to start the program. One thing I will say, a parent that was there, we were able to talk about the dual immersion. And she actually shot me an email and said, well, if this doesn't come to fruition, I would love to enroll in dual immersion. And again, a parent that was probably going to homeschool. So we are, you know, the dual immersion is another option in our county. And we had our first meeting and actually have sixteen or seventeen parents signed up. So there's only about anywhere from four to eight slots left. So if you're interested in dual immersion, you need to get on the list because it's filling up. And that is a phenomenal program, too. But yes, we'll get that to you as soon as possible, bring it to the Education Committee and have a discussion. And hopefully, by next board meeting, we will be able to, because we have kindergarten night, hopefully have some solid numbers. Okay, we'll let you know.
Yes.
You're talking about the cost for the program. So the cost for, like basically, funding the classroom because the materials focused on a Montessori classroom are very different than what we see in a traditional classroom. You don't, they don't just go to Walmart, go to the teacher store and buy things. They have things that follow them from pre-K all the way through kindergarten and beyond. So to outfit a Montessori classroom runs around thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. So looking at that price, things that, sitting down, talking to Dr. James and looking at it, a lot of the things we would typically put into a classroom, if we had to add an extra kindergarten somewhere, those types of funding would add up for us anyway with the things that are going on. So adding the entire classroom to be able to do that would help. Similarly, there is cost that comes with teacher training, but a lot of that may not be any different than the other professional development opportunities. We would just use it toward some of our professional development money to go toward that program and that teacher versus other things that we may have going on.
Okay, and Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, I know we were just looking at Oakboro as the possible location for this, but has it been considered to look at any other place in the county? And I know that when we discussed this in the meeting, it was brought up that that is where most people that are interested in this locate, are located. And so that would make the most sense. And with the STEM program being there, that's very similar to it. That's the explanation that was given, and I think that's a great explanation. But are there other parents that might be interested in another part of this county? We have the dual immersion in Indy. We have this in Oakboro, the STEM in Oakboro. And I think it would be fantastic if we had something in the northern end or in the Albemarle Central region because Oakboro sort of services South Stanley and Oakboro. And I know it's a STEM and it's open to everybody, and so you can come in from any part. But just looking at it on a location basis, a lot of parents might, would want something a little bit closer to home and have those opportunities spread out more around the county. Also, I would not want to see, as Mr. Graves said, an art and music classroom sacrificed for this. So I would want to see more options.
So actually, after we look at capacity tonight, Oakboro on paper has capacity versus other schools that are completely full. So when we were looking, it just happened that the parents from the western end are the ones that were interested in Montessori, been having a conversation probably for a year, and it's a slow-moving process on trying to get connected in that, I guess, network of individuals because it is different. But Oakboro, actually, we'll look at some capacity numbers here coming up. But Oakboro does have some capacity where other schools are not. You'll see in the capacity chart tonight, our city schools are full, a hundred percent. So with, with the requirements coming up. So it may be that we start it there, but if the board makes a decision, we need to open up a school or do something different, then, you know, it would be a program we could, we could easily transfer over to another school. The dual immersion program, what we done is just pick the, the school that had capacity. Indy wasn't full, plus it's the dead center of the county. So trying to make it equal for anybody that wanted to come. So yes, absolutely. I would just say that time is of the essence and it's not like we've not been working on it. And I think sometimes people don't know all the work that's put, put into something before it actually comes to the public. And it does take time and then there's roadblocks. So trying to get everything to you guys for March to have a decision to make. Again, if we started at Oakboro, the school got to the point that it was at capacity, then that would bear decisions to open up other schools. So when I show capacity numbers, I think the board's going to give me some direction after we show those numbers.
And something too on that note, that the principal kind of warned us on was the ideas and models, principles behind Montessori are a lot different than what we might see in our typical public school. So she said, if you do a school within a school model, it is better if it can be a standalone unit. And the building we thought about at Oakboro is off by itself. They don't, Montessori principals don't do a lot of rewards and competitions and things like that. So what they may be subjected to within the, within the rest of the school environment, up and down the typical hallways that the STEM students would be up and down, may look different than what their environment is. So not to seclude them and put them off on their own, but their program itself just looks a little different. And that was one of the things she mentioned. Think of a place that you've got that's not going to be right in the middle of a different type program for those students.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Thank you.
So more to come on that. So Lynn's going to talk to us about e-learning. We do need a, a board vote on the e-learning tonight. The Montessori, we have more to do to get you information on it. But he'll talk to you about e-learning and hopefully we can have a whole board vote tonight to, to move forward on it.
All right. So we have been tasked with, like a lot of other districts near us, that we wake up a lot of mornings to this being on the TV. And while this might look very exciting to a lot of our students, it's not very exciting to me. I don't like to miss school. But we know that there are a lot of reasons that we do miss school, not just snow. There's, we've had tornadoes, we've had floods, we've had microbursts, whatever the case may be, that we end up having to miss school. And when we, when we miss school and kids aren't there, they're actually missing out on instructional hours and things that are going on. So Dr. James had us taking a little bit of a closer look at virtual learning. Ways that inclement weather is not always going to impact us, that we're, that kids can keep learning. Kids can keep having school even when they're not in school. Of course, there are natural benefits to missing school. It gives us unexpected breaks. Sometimes we just need those little breaks thrown in there. We know that we keep students at home, they're not out on the roads and risking their safety. And then it also gives students social experiences outside of the school that we can't always necessarily offer, just getting outside and playing in the snow or the flood, whatever the case may be. The negatives may be that we have to turn around and then make up those school hours. Finding places to slide those in. Spring break, we take up those days, we end up going to school on Saturdays. Teachers have to change up what they're teaching and replan what's going on. And ultimately, students just lose that instruction that we really want them to have in the end. So our idea, we presented to the curriculum committee last week. We still want to talk to the policy committee to figure out what kind of procedure we need to put in place for this. But we also know that beyond that, we're going to have to do a lot of education with our teachers and with our parents. What is it that we're expecting? What is it that we are allowing here instead of school time? So the big factors that we really took into place were, how are we going to keep an understanding that students continue their learning? It's not, just because they're out of school doesn't mean they're not still doing something. How do we protect that time to make sure that they are getting some instruction in? What are the logistics of being able to do some virtual learning type things? And then just the school-home connection, making sure parents are on the same page we are. They understand it the same way we understand it along the way. So continuing student learning, our biggest focus is that we want kids to keep learning what they would be learning if they were at school. We don't want to put a stop in their education. We don't want to stop them from what they would typically be doing. No, the teacher can't go to everybody's house that morning and give them what they need. But being able to progress forward as though school is just ultimately happening at home. We would therefore use, if we're out of school in January, January, students seem to be doing things that they would typically be doing at school in January. They also need to focus on things that they can do on their own. Everybody doesn't have parents at home that are going to help. Everybody doesn't have somebody else to sit down with them and do some of these things and teach them that side of it. So if it's some, if it's something that they can do to show someone else and help them along the way, that's kind of what we're looking at. Rather than just opening up a free-for-all of ideas of activities to be done at home, we're looking at things that can be more grade-specific. What is it that a kindergartner should be learning right now? What is it that a fifth grader should be learning right now? We want the activities to be very relevant to what's going on and not just play busy work for the day. Something they can actually take away from after they've been out. And we want the expectation across the district to be very consistent. What's happening at Richfield needs to happen at Norwood, needs to happen at Locust. Our logistics are kind of where we've spent a lot of time trying to figure out, how is this going to work for us? So our idea would be that we have assignments that are pre-made and ready for teachers so that when we know there's inclement weather coming, coming up, we're able to push this out and get it to students. We also have the ability that if we get to the point of, we've used all of our makeup days, all of us left is Saturdays, rather than Saturdays, using some of these activities to help build in there so that we're not having to require students to come on those Saturdays where we have low attendance and we ended up, end up with a lot of students absent. Or spring break, when vacations are planned and things are going on and we have low attendance. We do know that because of state testing, we are not allowed to take away within a certain timeframe there. So we've got to watch when we're able to use these virtual days. We would however, give students time, once they come back to school, to complete and turn in the assignments that are given to them. The expectation is not, they come back that next day and it's due right away. Because we have students that don't have that help at home, that may need some extra time. They may not have power during those days. So we do have to offer some flexibility there. Our biggest idea around this though, is this is really a big thing for our students. Teachers would still follow our same guidelines that we have to go by for inclement weather when they're out of school. The procedures that they follow would not change. They would just kind of slip, slip into having their students do this so they've got something to bring back to them when they come back. Hopefully, the idea would be that we involve families in what's going on. Let families see what types of things are going on at school. Let them see what it's like to work with their child in that instructional environment. And we, we've got to, moving forward, get some information out to parents. That's part of why Dr. James says we kind of need to move forward on this tonight because it hasn't snowed yet, but we never know when it's going to. So we need to let parents know what our expectation is moving forward. So on the elementary end, when we say virtual learning opportunity, we're not meaning virtual as in computer. We're meaning from Webster's dictionary, being such an essence or effect. Basically, we are virtually picking up school and moving it from this building into your house. So that becomes your virtual school at that point. In the elementary world, we don't have one-to-one devices that students take devices home. A lot of homes don't have internet. A lot of these types of inclement weather present power issues. So internet's not necessarily the best way to go for us anyway. So we've pulled back from the computer side of things to make it focus more on hands-on activities. What kids can do, that we know all kids can do with their parents at home. So our idea around that is to give each student a choice board. The choice board, picture a tic-tac-toe board in your mind, nine different squares. Each day, a student completes three of those squares. One activity revolves around literacy, one revolves around math, one is a reading comprehension. So every day they're out, they complete three different activities. The parent or guardian that is with them is able to work with them, play the game with them that's in there, sign off to show what they've done. And then all that packet goes back to school. Whether they complete everything or not, it all goes back. If we're only out of school one day, there's more work left in there that the teacher can use in workstations and small groups throughout the rest of the month because what's in there goes along with what they're teaching that month anyway. So in your packet, you should have a little Ziploc bag. You can tell it's kindergarten with that snowman on the front. What you see in, on the yellow sheet is what each kindergarten teacher would be given. It's basically just the rules and procedures, expectations of what this virtual learning opportunity would look like so that the teacher sees it the same way the parents are also going to see it. It just kind of explains how to use the virtual learning board, the tic-tac-toe board, that would give you, if you look across the middle there, it will show you the four different ways to make tic-tac-toe. So students can be out of school for four days and it would give them four days' worth of work, of things that they could do based on what's going on, what they would be doing if they were at school, basically. If you look at the blue sheet directly behind it, it looks very similar to the teacher, except this is what would go home with each student. So at the top, it gives that same set of directions that the teachers are seeing to explain to the parents what the expectation is for completing this while school is out. They sign and date at the bottom, write the number of the activities that they do. And then on the back is the choice board itself, the tic-tac-toe board. So you can see those nine activities. Four of them are reading, four of them are math. The middle one is always something to do with reading comprehension, just because that's a big skill we need to focus on. Also, in the packet then would be any of the activities that students would need to complete for that choice board. So everything is there for them. It's just a matter of sitting down, taking time, working with mom, dad, older brothers, grandparents, neighbors, whoever, to go through those things. We, we've tried to include things that are not just pushing a pencil the whole time, but adding some games in there along the way, adding some things that they can cut out, things that they can glue and sort. Again, this is the kindergarten example, which is what we would have used if we were, had missed a day in January. Thank goodness we did not. But we would then have a February board for kindergarten, a March board for kindergarten. Same things for the other grade levels so that if that snow day pops up, we have that ready to push out to the kids and have it ready. On the teacher side of things, by having these ahead of time, teachers could go ahead and copy these, have these ready, store them back so that when they're ready to be used, they just pull them out and go. It's not a free-for-all at the last minute, trying to scrounge around and, and get everything together. They can be prepared ahead of time so that they're ready to go home with students. But this way, each kindergartner across the district would all have these same activities. They're all looking at it the same way to take some of that off, some of that work off the teachers and some of that consistency then spread across the whole district. Dr. Ellis is going to talk about the middle and high school version.
Good evening. So in talking with our secondary principals and instructional coaches, we are presenting a flexible format. So the assignment would be completed for each class for each day missed, similar to what the elementary would be. And the principals would hold those teachers accountable for communicating those assignments. So our rationale for being a little different, for changing it up and not being so prescriptive about exactly what's going to happen for math and what's going to happen for reading is because, you know, our secondary students are very independent. You know, they're already using blended models in their classrooms already. They're using Canvas, Google Classroom, you know, all kinds of websites, HyperDox. You know, they take online courses at the high school. So they're very accustomed to that environment. Also, we were kind of overwhelmed with how many courses that we have, you know, to prepare for, to make, you know, assignments for each course. You know, in looking at just, just our course offerings, I mean, I think it was when we talked to Ms. Gibson, you know, just looking at our course offerings, it's, it's about 28 pages of high school courses now. You know, we may not necessarily offer every one of those every semester, but you know, there's, there's a tremendous amount of courses offered. Also, you know, that ELA math model doesn't necessarily work for a high school student who this semester may not have an ELA class or, you know, one semester does not have a math class. So, you know, those are some things that we considered. Also, you know, for middle school students, you know, they have a different teacher for each area and then they also have the exploratory. They have access to student devices. Our middle school students don't take home their devices, but our high school students are able to do that. And then also to allow for that flexibility, you know, just looking at some, some figures, Census Bureau, I mean, our students do, or our households, you know, 85% of them do have that broadband access. 77% you know, have a computer. And again, if we were to offer something that they could access online, they would have up to five days to complete it. So I just provided a few examples of, you know, some things that secondary may assign. You know, we have programs, you know, IXL for math. We have a biology e-text that students can access in addition to their, their print version. There are similar things out there, you know, for, just to give you an example, this is the only one I'm going to open up. But, you know, for secondary, there are tic-tac-toe boards, those kinds of things. When we, you know, talked to Ms. Gibson about it, she was very interested in having some consistency for, you know, secondary. So, you know, we will definitely work with schools and teachers to develop some virtual learning plans. So, you know, working with our school principals and deciding, okay, well, what should all sixth-grade ELA teachers, you know, creating some assignments that way. We haven't begun that process. We wanted to present this and see, you know, your thoughts on it. You know, our idea was, it may be a print version, but it may be a digital assignment. And just to get your thoughts on that, if you feel like it needs to be one or, you know, one or the other. We just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? So my question about the e-learning, so if they complete this, this makes up the day that was lost, or no?
Yes.
We have talked to other districts who have kind of piloted this and done this and just trying to work through the attendance part of it. The way they handle it is every student is marked present, absent, whichever way the district decides in the system. If they, if they're, everybody's marked absent that day, when they turn in their work, then it's changed to a present or vice versa. Everybody's marked present, if they don't turn in the work, it turns into absent. Whatever would work better on the data manager's end. So this basically, our thought was, if we miss school today and we make up the day Saturday, we really only have a half-day of school. So going back in and adding in these activities, giving them those three activities a day could essentially equal to what they would potentially do during that time that they were at school that morning.
Yeah, I was just wondering, will we have any system in place? I know we, we've talked a lot about parent involvement and how that's essential for a child's education. The only thing I see is, you know, kids that have parents that are very involved are absolutely going to get this done. Whereas kids that don't have that parent involvement, it may fall through the cracks. Is there any way to kind of capture them so we make sure that they don't fall behind or lose?
Well, and that's part of, Transylvania County is where a lot of this was modeled after because they've really moved forward with it. One of the ways that they support that is they use their teacher assistants. And because teacher assistants may end up not being paid for that day that we're out of school. teacher assistants may end up not being paid for that day that we're out of school, giving them a chance to work with those students and potentially build up some of their hours along the way, so that then students aren't losing, but then also teacher assistants aren't losing during that time off either.
How do you, I know this is a little far-fetched, but this out of curiosity. My name's Little Johnny and I'm slow, okay? So I got a sister who's real smart, and she can do all this stuff in about five minutes that would take me two hours to do. So I go over and talk to sis, and, you know, I walk the dog for her and she does my stuff.
You'd be a lot smarter than you give yourself credit for.
Yeah.
I know that's getting way out on a limb, but I mean, that's a possibility that that could be happening, and I don't know if there's some way you could, maybe when they bring their stuff in, you could do a little review-like and say, hey, you know, just make sure that you get a-
Some kind of formative assessment with them, sure. Because I mean, that could be an assignment, read this article, annotate, or, you know, make notes, and then come back prepared for a quiz on, you know, on Monday, or whatever the case may be, to show, to demonstrate their knowledge, some kind of quick.
I know, one of the things, they were talking about making a visual thing, it'd be sort of hard for somebody to cheat on that one. But anyway, all right, I'm sorry, anyone else have any questions on this?
For the middle and high school boards, if you choose a digital learning platform, did you have a creative platform as a backup? Again, the same thing comes to matter if the internet's down and their power's out.
Sure.
You know, and they can be able to complete their assignment.
So that's kind of what I was thinking, like, when we create those lesson ideas, you know, have the print version available, have the internet, like, a link to the article, but then also have it, you know, a print version, and you know your students, you know, you know, typically, we kind of know when weather's coming, or particularly if we know, hey, we're not going to have school on Saturday, here's this assignment to make that up, so they could, teachers could provide that for students, you know, and, you know, I've put 15 copies at the back, if you need one, you know, grab one on your way out. Because that, I mean, you know, that happens for any kind of homework assignments, you know, currently.
So Chairman Poole, I would need the board to give us a vote tonight to move forward with this. We'll develop the procedures for the policy committee, it doesn't require policy change.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve the, have a second, Ms. Gibson, for moving forward with this. Any further discussion or questions? You're none of those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're doing that one, Dr. James.
Yes, Hope's going to bring up a, unless we have any further technical difficulties, a projection of capacity. So we've had numerous conversations around this, and unless you're on the school board or dealing with the state Department of Instruction and, of course, the General Assembly, most people aren't aware of this, but of course, the state has legislated maximum class size in K through three. And that created quite a bit of issues. For instance, my colleague in Wake County, Wake County would have to build 17 new elementary schools to be in compliance with the state general statute by 2021 and 2022. So of course, we pleaded with the General Assembly to reconsider this because one size does not fit all. So the districts that cannot comply with that will not get funding for art, music, and PE, which unbeknownst again to the general public are not funded anyway, it's an unfunded mandate. We are funded core teachers, we have never been funded for K-5, or actually K-8, art, music, or PE. So if you have those teachers, you again, pull them out of local dollars. And again, it's based on your tax base, property values, et cetera. So counties that have money can provide those, counties that don't, try to figure it out the best way they can. So we're in the, we're going to go the route of getting that music, art, and PE teacher. So what the Facilities Committee asked me to do was, was take this, sit down, go back through it, and we have the total number of classrooms listed by school. So as 2021 and 2022 gets here, we have highlighted the capacity of each school. So if you'll notice, Aquadale will be at 96% capacity when we add the required number of teachers, and what's happening, the state's requiring us to lower the number of students that can be in a classroom, so this means we're getting more teachers and need more classrooms. And in addition to that, we add a music and art teacher, and we have special ed classes that we add too. So if you look at Aquadale, they have 26 classrooms available, we're going to be using 25 of those by the time 2021, 2022 gets here. That's EC, and we also have a pre-K at Aquadale, so that's another room that's used. So as we scroll through, we'll look at each school. So Aquadale, in two years from now, will be at 96%. Baden will be at 111%. So not much opportunity at Baden to add to the building, so we're going to have to study that one, and Baden's not setting where it lends itself easily to any redistricting. So hopefully, after we go through all this, you'll give me some direction tonight, and then I'll start on it. But Central, you know, I hear about our inner-city schools, why don't, you know, we do this and that. Central will be at 102% capacity, there is no room at Central to do anything. So again, no way to expand any programs, and this is adding an art and music teacher. The next ESA course is going to be at 105%. So these are some things we've got to start thinking as taxpayers and citizens of Stanley what we're going to do. And I will tell you that the census report that come out are statistics, actually, Stanley County has grown about 6.3% in population in the last 10 years, since I served on the Economic Development Council, not to divulge anything, but there is economic activity in this county that has the potential to bring in even more housing starts. So the county is in a position to grow in the near future. So Indy, with the dual immersion program, it's got an NC pre-K class there, a music and art class, we're going to be at 104%. Locust, this end of the county is growing rapidly, and I will tell you this, Locust is enrolling two or three kids a week. So Locust is going to be at 96%. And let's look at Millingport. Millingport has 16 classrooms, we'll need 26. So moving on to Norwood, 86%. Oakboro, 104% in two years, and that includes Montessori, so I did count four Montessori classrooms. Richfield, 95%. Stanfield's going to be at 88, 89%. It's not really good to have a school over 90% capacity, so that's typically where you cap your schools, most districts cap them for enrollment. So I need direction from the board tonight because it's apparent that we have Millingport, Indy, and one other school that slipped my mind, Locust, that definitely are going to be busting at the seams in two years, and I will tell you that it will take, in my opinion, that much time to have community meetings, to bring in a plan, to look at if we need to redistrict, if we need to open up Ridgecrest. I would recommend to the board that you direct me tonight to move forward on how we could open Ridgecrest back up. That's going to take some time. There's some capital needs that are there that we'll have to have conversations with the county commissioners about, there's some redistricting that we'll need to get the Urban Institute out of Charlotte involved in, and of course, many, many community meetings to get inputs from the community, as we strive to do. So again, if you give me that direction tonight, it will, it will do all we can do to get that up and going if we need to open that school back up in 2021, 2022.
Any questions, comments on that?
I have a question. The art and music, and having a question there. Now, I know that doesn't mean they're going to have an art and music teacher there at the same time, or they're going to have art and music teacher that is the same.
Yes, every day, because currently, we're having to share because we pay for that locally. So we do not have enough local dollars to afford an art and PE and a music teacher at every school, so we split those teachers between schools. The state is going to fully fund by 2021, 2022. So you had a trade-off. Either you built schools, you decided you were going to comply and built schools, or you decided that you would comply with the K-3 law size, and if you complied with the K-3 law, then the state would back up and give you funding, full funding, for an art teacher, a music teacher, and a PE teacher per school. So the first time in the history, they would fully fund those three positions at each elementary. So we stand to gain 33 teachers by 2021, 2022. So of course, an art teacher would need her classroom, and a music teacher would need hers, because they will be teaching art and music all day long, just like a regular core teacher. Now we just plug in.
Okay, so it's not, like, I actually was talking, I called someone today to work on school board association, and asked basically two things. One thing I asked was, is there a chance that still there may be waivers with this? Now, we got into a discussion with the board that, knowing that we're going to have a superintendent of public instruction, no doubt about it, will. And then not knowing what the legislature will look like, they're going to work real hard, that's what I was told, to really look at, because there's so many counties, you know, that are struggling because of this. So she said waiver may not be out of the picture. And then I was asking about the art and music, because I was told that maybe this was not as recent or whatever that, you've got one enhancement teacher, and I'm assuming enhancement is the art and music teacher, based on 191 students.
Yes, that's correct, but they only, that's not 100% funded. Initially, it was 25% funded, the state's never going to give us anything 100%. So in General Assembly, I'm not worried about ever who's state superintendent, this is a law, this is in law, so it would take a huge change in the legislature for this to be reversed, because they're pretty dead-set. And we were allowed to apply for waivers last year, and we're held to ELA, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, ELA, and that's what we take the number off of for the waiver. So we're currently over those numbers already in science and some other courses, but they're just holding us to the letter of the law on ELA class sizes. So there is some workarounds on that, but they're pretty adamant that they've done this. And of course, Wake County has a lot of power since it's the largest county in the state, and they've been unable to get it overturned. So Wake is moving forward to take the, well, there's a waiver. So the waiver is, you don't comply with class sizes, we don't give you any AMP teachers, and you continue as you are, you don't build any schools. So you're going to be over the limit, but you're not going to get any AMP teachers. So by 2021, 2022, if you're out of compliance with the law, they will not, they will pull your funding for AMP teachers. So we have capacity in our building, so it's smart for us, and I will tell you, all of our schools would tell you, and you know it, being a teacher, if they had that art, music, and PE teacher at each building, that's three more bodies in that building that can help out, where we, oh yeah, by the way, don't have TAs that mysteriously disappeared, but not according to some legislators, but we have 40 less. But that's where we're at. So again, we can't wait to decide what the General Assembly, in my opinion, is going to do, because time is of the essence. It will take a year and a half to get a study, to have parent and community meetings that we need to have and get input on, if you're going to redistrict and open up Ridgecrest, you need to have conversations with the county commissioners, because Ridgecrest, in my guesstimate, needs about $800,000 worth of repairs. We don't have that in capital funds, nor we, should we have to pull that out and rob other schools to get Ridgecrest back up and going?
Okay, I would like to ask, I'm sorry. I saw a video that was posted last night on Facebook. Someone had been in Ridgecrest and was walking around with the video, pointing out all, you know, the classrooms, everything. I think that post, I think it's been taken down now, I can't, I can't find it. Can we, can we go as a board, can we go look at Ridgecrest?
Yes, if you want to be upset, you can, but-
Well, I mean, I was, I mean, I saw from that video.
And so that's a prime thing, if you cannot close a school, and it does, if you vacate your house, it will fall apart quicker than you living in it. So when people think you can close a school, it's an asset of the taxpayers of this county. If you just shut a school and walk away, you're not going to have an asset in about 10 years. And we spent millions of dollars on Ridgecrest, and we still owe debt on it. So it sort of behooves us, and we have tried vehemently to strike us a partnership with the college, we've talked to commissioners, Chairman Poole and I have met several times. We thought we had a deal set up to put some career technical classes out there through the college, they decided to build an eight-and-a-half million, which is their purview, and I don't fault Dr. Inamai at all. They're building, you know, an $8 million facility there on campus to do con ed in trades, so it's apparent, we can't do a deal on Ridgecrest. Meanwhile, we're going, we've got two years to get a plan together ahead of time, because we'll be opening up that fall of 2021, 2022. So it's going to take a lot of work to get you, because I can tell you that roughly, and Todd's in the room, but 800,000 may be a low-ball number, it may be a million. So then we're going to have to go to the commissioners and have a conversation about, we need money to renovate Ridgecrest to get it back up to speed, so we can open it as an elementary. But, you know, you would pull, typically pull from Indy, Millingport, of course, Millingport's going to be over capacity anyway, and Locust, and Locust is growing. The one thing I didn't put on this chart, West Stanley Middle School is another place we're going to have to look. I can tell you that they're heading towards 700. And I'm, Todd's in here, and I'm, the capacity is probably not much over 700 at that school. So again, it's probably a school that needs an additional wing added to it, and that would roughly be about $4.5 million. So there's some decisions as a county we're going to have to make in the next two to three years for our students, because we are growing, we're not shrinking with the programs we're offering. So I just need direction from the board, and I really, it's up to you to tell me what to do, and if you tell me tonight to proceed, then I'm going to be making phone calls tomorrow to start the ball rolling.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McIntyre.
I would just like to move that we, as a board, go ahead and give Dr. James the liberty to begin exploring the capital needs, as well as the cost on what it will take to reopen Ridgecrest in lieu of this class-sized legislation for the 21, 22 school year.
Everyone understand the motion? Read it again.
Oh, I didn't write it down.
You didn't write it down? Check it out. All right, the motion is to let, get Dr. James to go ahead, to go ahead and start doing the planning and associate it with opening Ridgecrest back, is that basically what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody got that? Right, any discussion? You're none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay, motion carries. I just would say that, and looking at that too, Todd or whoever, and see what you think we could shave off over the next two years on our capital, capital, you know, to do our contribution, if we're going to be hitting the commissioners up for anything else, I'd like for us to try to squeeze what we can into a contribution before we even go there.
Absolutely, and if the board, if you want to tour it, by all means, just let me or Todd know, and we'll set up a time you can go out and tour the school. We did have some West Stanley High School students help us clean it up a little bit recently, but that was after they dirtied it up, but that's another story. So next, I do want to cover a few things with you on capacity.
Hold, hold this minute, make sure I'm clear on what would be the projected date for opening out there.
It would need to be 2021, 2022, so the town is over the edge.
So you're talking about the year after this year that we're, okay.
It'll need the rest of this year and another year.
Got you. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, interruption.
Okay, did y'all take a vote on that? You did. So moving forward, so this is part of capacity also, so I did want to talk about a few things. This is restoration time for high school, if Hope can pull it up. Maybe, maybe, there we go. So I did want to cover this, and of course, back in my day, and we have all these acronyms in education, so really, you spend about a year as a new board member trying to figure out what we're saying, and we tend to forget, because everything's an acronym, but back in the day, that we used to call them vocational classes, but now we call them career technical. So what I've got before you is what's required of every student that's in our school system. Students have to get 28 credits to graduate. 16 of those credits are required by the state. So now you're down to students only getting to select 12 optional credits. Well, out of those 12 are your arts, so drama, art, theater, just a lot of different things that kids take. So in reality, most kids take four different electives, so now you're up to 20 courses a kid really has tied down to, so that leaves realistically about 8- has tied down to. So that leaves realistically about eight classes open that they can sort of decide what they want to take. So if you look at this, um, there's quite a few options. So our kids have the option AP Capstone, International Baccalaureate, which we are moving forward with candidacy there, will be a world school once we receive that, um, internationally recognized, the STEAM Academy at West Stanley, and of course, the Second Early College is Stanley, um, STEAM at, well, actually, yeah, Stanley STEM at the Almar High School. And I'm actually pretty excited. What I'm hearing is that, that school will probably be over a hundred students. We have two hundred and thirty students on campus at Stanley Community College. So sometimes we get hung up on the numbers. I mean, if we move those two hundred students back to Almar High School, Almar High School would be over almost six hundred students. So there's two hundred and thirty some of our students on the campus of Stanley Community College. Um, Almar High School is a school within a school, which is across the US, but there's a hundred and forty courses available so, to our students. So there's sixteen required courses, there's a hundred and forty courses available in the course catalog. And you can see here what's required by the state as far as credits. Um, one thing I will say, we do need to produce more trade and technical degree students. The problem is, and there's a legislator in the room, we're still holding on to a model that's for a four-year college student. Back in the day, we taught technical math, technical math one, technical math two, technical English one, technical English two. And that was enough if you were going to get a two-year technical degree and go into industry. The state still has a model set up to make you a four-year college student. And that does not suffice for a lot of our students, and it's a roadblock for many of them getting their, uh, career technical degrees, uh, and going on to Stanley Community College. And here's one thing that we need to understand. If a student leaves us and you think they're going to go to the college and go on for a two-year technical degree, there's about a twenty-five percent chance that's going to happen. So while we have them in, in, in our high school environment is the best time to teach them a trade. So Hope, next slide. But again, so here's the things we offer. There's, there's sixteen career pathways. Uh, in those pathways, we offer fifteen of the sixteen. So here they are. So it doesn't matter if you're in Charlotte, Wake, Union, Cabarrus, there, you, you can't create pathways. There's some local options, but very few people do that. Uh, there's only a few in the state. So what you're getting here is what you would get anywhere else. The only thing we do not offer in a pathway is public administration. So I don't think many people want to be a county manager or a, an official in a township. So we have, nobody's ever asked us about public administration. But again, we don't do that. Um, and what, a lot of these are offered in conjunction with the college. We're also looking at work-based learning apprenticeships, internships, industry tours. And if you look at, we're getting ready to offer Cisco Network Engineering, we're going to offer cyber security, we're constantly adding new courses. So here's the ones that, that are available to our students. Now you got to remember, there's only about eight courses they can take. So here's fifteen different pathways. Next slide, Hope. So if you'll notice the ones with the asterisk on them, those are the only ones that ninth graders can take. Again, a roadblock put in place by the general assembly and the state. Um, so there's only certain things a ninth grader can take. If you look at advertising and graphic design, it's not available to ninth graders. It's only in eleventh grade you can take that. So if it doesn't have an asterisk by it, you cannot take it until you're eleventh grade. So I understand industry's in need of help, and we keep talking about it, but we, we need to catch up with it on our, uh, roadblocks we put in place for kids. So we have pharmacy technology, nursing aid. Um, I will tell you that the HOSA program at, um, Almar High School Campus is full every semester. We bus kids into that, it's a great program. That's why we started the Stanley STEM there, try, and it's health and occu- uh, health occupations, uh, type course to also be, uh, getting some of our early college students into those career pathways. Next slide. So again, uh, current students, high school students says registration February third to the twenty-eighth. So when we talk about registration, basically we have a twenty-seven page registration guide, anything in that guide a student can sign up for. And we encourage them to do so. Um, and if anyone hears this, please let me know, but we should not be discouraging any student from signing up for anything. Like I said, if fifteen students signed up for basket weaving at West Stanley High School, then Ann and I would jump in the car and head up to the mountains and see if we could find somebody that's qualified to teach basket weaving. Uh, again, we also have to be able to find a teacher. I will tell you that drafting teachers you will not find. They're making six figures in industry. Unfortunately, they're not going to teach for us for about forty-five. CTE pays a little bit more because you can get years of service, but they're not going to come to work for us for half the pay. So it's not going to happen. So sometimes we can plug in the part-time instructors. The firefighting program is retired people that's teaching that. Um, we are looking at adding welding or HVAC. We did try to offer that, did not have enough students sign up for it. But here's another caveat. So get this, if this is not enough roadblocks, let's throw another one. So if you don't have a GPA of a three point oh or higher, you cannot take a career pathway course with the college. That's another roadblock that's in the law. So you have to sign a waiver as a principal. So again, the kids who need the technical skills the most, we are throwing multiple roadblocks in their pathways to stop them from getting that. So a- again, as you guys realize, we operate in a very small square box and try to do the best we can for kids and what we're dictated, but we are providing for our kids everything that's available in every other district in the state. It's just they, if they're interested, they need to sign up for it, then it's our duty to try to make, make it happen. Um, we're getting ready to open up a new ag program at South Stanley, aquaponics. Uh, we're partnering with Lucky Clay Farms. They're excited. There's a career pathway directly into helping, uh, a business here in the county. So we're getting that off the ground. Uh, again, on every campus, we offer something different. So you, you've heard that in some of the video tonight, and you heard our teacher of the year tell you that he's been here all his life and we're offering more things for kids now than we ever have. So you have an international baccalaureate program, a career program in that. We're looking at opening up the middle years program, that's also part of IB. You've got AP Capstone Academy at South Stanley, you've got STEAM Academy at West Stanley, you've got the Second Early College of STEM at Almar High School. There's, there's not a whole lot more that we can offer. I mean, it, it's available, and if kids want it, then we'll do our best to make it happen. And I, and I go around and talk to the kids with my staff, uh, and we talk to them and ask them their interest. And, you know, where did the idea come from for magnet high schools? Well, that would be our customers and that would be the students. Because they kept saying we would like to have more offerings. Uh, Vicki or Hope and I once sat, and, and a Greystone kid was enrolled at North Stanley, and she said, I come back because of all the great things y'all guys are offering. So it's enticed me to come back from Greystone and, and engage here because of the IB program and some other things that are going on. So we are listening to our customer. Uh, I think we've done a great job of putting magnet schools out there. We've opened up the dual immersion program. These are a lot of things that much larger counties have that rural counties do not. So we've, we've made that happen through trying to pinch every penny. So again, I think that's the last slide. There might be one more. There you go. So here's our different academies that you can enroll into. By the way, the Stanley STEM at Almar High Schools, the Dolphins, don't ask me. That's, that's what the kids want. Any questions? And you actually have a guide, uh, in your ear of all the stuff we offer in career?
I have a question.
Ms. Grant, yes.
Um, I know that we had mentioned as a board, um, having, I know we mentioned this about Ridgecrest, trade vocational school. Now, I think I talked with you about Almar High School. Is, is that something that we can continue to look at, explore, like-
Absolutely.
As far as that vocational trade hub?
Absolutely. I would think all, all the board members have that same thought process as you. So when you said it, I didn't have to wait for six other people to tell me. We all have that same desire to make sure we can touch these kids. But like I just showed you, all the roadblocks are in the way. So we had a meeting this week, and the principal can do a waiver to allow any student with less than a three point oh grade point average to enter a class. We're missing a whole group of kids that are Stanley Academy. Those kids need, and I, I go talk to them. And one of their things was, we have opened up CTE courses there. The academy didn't have any CTE courses, career technical. So we actually have three or four career technical courses there for those kids because they need a skill. Um, they're struggling with traditional school. So again, we're, we're trying to look at different ways. There is woodworking. Uh, I've, I've done a text today. There's like seven or eight different career technical things we're currently offering at Almar High School. And, uh, we have one side of that building open, so we're talking about trying to get the HVAC program there by waiving some of the kids at the academy. But, you know, our next step is to get a couple of the HVAC companies out to go in and talk to our kids because they need to hear from them. You know, it's, it's a pretty clean job. And if you get your degree, you're looking at a forty, forty-five thousand dollars start and pay in HVAC. And so get that going. We would love to set up, probably if we do welding, we're going to, and welders are in high demand. Um, so some of this, we have to get, we have requirements. If it's our teacher, they have to go through the teaching standards and get all that. The best way to do it is get part-time people to come in and teach the course. That way, we're not required to have them certified as a teacher. That's, that's the holdback, is, is all the legal stuff the state puts on. If you try to hire a full-time welding teacher, then they have to get certified as a teacher, they have to go through all the, and they're not going to do that for what it pays. So that's why we've done the firefighting, public safety programs. We have part-time people that come in and teach those courses. So yes, we're, uh, we're all over that like white on rice.
All right.
Well, white rice. There's brown.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Forgive me for going off agenda here, but I would like to move to extend our meeting past ten o'clock.
Uh, we, we will need to do that. Have a motion to extend our meeting past ten o'clock? Do we have a second?
[inaudible]
Two seconds there. Any discussion? We're going to have to do it or not. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Um, next on the agenda is, um, thank you for that litany of stuff there, Dr. James. I think it's critical and important that public knows we are on cutting edge of what's going on here. Uh, Ms. Calvert.
An updated copy of the personnel agenda was at your spot. Section one requires no action, but section two does require action.
Move approval of section two.
Motion to approve section two by Mr. McIntyre. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second. Uh, any discussion? You're none, uh, all in favor, signal if I'm saying aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harvey, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, sir.
We're still above ground, right? We're still above, still above the red line, I should say. Okay. Okay, public comments. We have one, and I apologize for taking so long to get this point, but we had a lot to cover tonight. Jeffrey Hoy, I think the way I pronounce that.
Yep. Thank you very much. I'm Jeffrey Hoy, and yes, I am running for, uh, the state senate position here in a primary, democratic primary. So if you're an unaffili- registered, unaffiliated or Democrat, you can vote for me. Please, if you're Republican, don't try, that would be election fraud. Don't do it. Don't do it, don't do it. Okay, if we win the primary, then you'll have a chance. Um, you know, I, as I said when, at the legislative session that I was able to attend, I, I'm going around Stanley County trying to listen and learn to boards, to town councils, uh, city council, et cetera. And tonight I've just listened and learned a whole lot more. I, it's just so obvious from what you're talking about that there's been a lack of collaboration between the actual practicalities of school board operation and school operation and teachers in the classroom, and the way the legislature seems to have put together, um, rules, regulations, laws, which do not facilitate what you all are trying to do. And in fact, as, as the superintendent has pointed out, you know, make it in some cases more difficult. Thank you for teaching me. I suspected this, but now you're giving me the concrete data to, uh, to include, uh, in, in ways in which I might try to promote a different kind of legislative action. I, I found myself looking at, you know, I, I wrote this, you know, you, you put things together in a campaign, but from what I'm hearing tonight, I, I really wrote something decent. I stand for student-focused education with increased funding and flexibility. I got that into a sentence, and I think it makes a whole lot of sense for making the whole process of education so much better. So I thank you for, for teaching me. And, and I, I also attend meetings of the, uh, Salisbury Ro- Roan, uh, Roan Salisbury School System. And again, but the exciting things that go on here, my goodness, this, this STEM thing that, that, that was presented tonight. And there's similar things like that going on in Roan County. They, they have the opportunity, uh, that they were given the term of being a renewal district. So a whole lot of these regulations were lifted. And they said, go do it. And the superintendent said to all the, all the, the schools, go do it, develop your stuff, your plans, your dreams, your focus for, for your area. And they brought it back in for board approval, school by school by school. And, and I'm thinking, gosh, wouldn't that make a whole lot of sense across the board? But of course, in order to do that, you have to study how effective it really was and put the study together and then try to figure out how it might work, you know, in all the counties in, in the state. One problem, the money allocated for the study commission to evaluate the experiment in Roan County was in the budget that hasn't been passed. So, um, yes, thank you. I, one of our, our high school principals in, in Roan taught me CTE. There's all this stuff going on floating around. I now know what CTE is. And yes, it is extremely important. And you can't force everybody into going to college, uh, you know, the academic, you know, ki- kind of stuff. But in order to do the, the, the jobs that are being created nowadays, you must be very competent in running the computers that run the machines that make the stuff, or, or, or the, the computers that, that run the, the, uh, all, all the software kind of stuff that, that, that makes for, uh, you know, so, so much of what goes on in, in the world today. Anyhow, um, I, I think I'm preaching to the choir. Um, you know, so, so that, that's what I'm about, what I'm trying to be about. Thank you for doing what you are trying to do, uh, within the limitations that you have. I do have a website, Hoy4NC, uh, and, and you can look that up, find out more about me, et cetera. Early voting starts on February thirteenth. And, uh, you know, you, you, uh, the, the, the main place here is in Albemarle, in, in this building, in fact, and then over in Locust here in, in Stanley County. But early voting starts on the thirteenth. March third is the Tuesday, you know, to, to go to a, uh, please pass that word along, that people vote, for heaven's sake, and, and help them to think before they vote. So they know what they're voting for and are helping you to do the job which you are trying to do and make your work even easier and better. And, again, I say, keep up the good work. It's really exciting to see the good things happen that are happening. And here, I, just one final word. Two years ago, little over two years ago, uh, I, I was at a, uh, a Stanley County Women's, um, Democratic meeting. And there was this new guy who was coming to be superintendent with all the enthusiasm that a new guy common man would have. And here it is, two years later, that enthusiasm has spread. You're very fortunate to have this man as your superintendent. Keep up the good work. Oh, by the way, your name's also Jeff, isn't it?
Jeff.
Jeff, yeah. Okay. Take, take care and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Uh, do we need to give you any more comments tonight, Dr. James?
I have it.
You're up. On the agenda, you're up.
Well, it is, uh, National School Counseling Week, so shout out to all of our school counselors and the hard work they do. It's also CTE month, um, and there is a CTE Teacher Appreciation Breakfast, February twenty-eighth. We'll post all this on the website, eight thirty to ten at Second Street Sundry's. And just a shout out to all the hard work from everybody in the schools, from the custodians, cafeteria people, bus drivers. It takes a team to make things work. And you, you need to be really proud of what you've accomplished this past year for twenty-one schools. And we had eighteen that met or exceeded growth. It's pretty phenomenal. Actually, Dr. Stigall, and I said, well, several of our schools were a hundred percent free introduced lunch. And he said, that is amazing. That does not happen. That's an anomaly. It's, it's the hard work in our schools and great leadership from our principals. Um, we've done great things. And I think Lynn and the, Susan and the curriculum team, Dr. Ellis, would tell you that, uh, we have excitement again in our teacher- would tell you that we have excitement again in our teachers. They're motivated. They see positive things happening with the direction we're going and the programs we put into place. So I'm excited. Always, it's very exciting to see when people are successful. There's not a teacher in our district that doesn't want to have every student in their classroom successful. And frustration comes when you keep doing the same thing but not getting any results. So we've re-equipped them with MTSS and some other things in the district, and it's real exciting. Just the whole motivational aspect of our system's just very uplifting. I've hear very few negative comments about anything we're doing, and a lot of people are really happy with what's going on. I actually had a few of the older people, I swear they didn't listen to the radio or probably couldn't hear it, but they do. So, no, it was a joke. So Chairman Poole, he hears the radio. But the radio broadcast, I actually hadn't been on in a while. We do a Dr. J and Mandy Show and try to bring all the great news and be a little funny in doing it. So some of the people caught me and said, "Haven't heard you on the radio in a while. Would really enjoy that. Please make it a habit." So we're trying to do it once a week. So again, just getting the word out and help us. You know, there's just a lot of things we're doing. We're trying every way under the sun to advertise what we're doing, and still, there's pockets of people that don't know all the great things we're doing. So again, appreciate all the hard work out in our schools. It couldn't happen without the dedication of our employees. So thanks.
Thank you, Dr. James. Mr. Graves, you're up.
Chairman Poole, thank you very much. First of all, I want to try and speak quickly here. I know it's late, and I appreciate your indulgence here. First of all, I want to congratulate Dr. James and the faculty, staff of Stanley County Schools on all the awards tonight. 18 of 21 schools meeting or exceeding growth. That's phenomenal. The recognition that all the schools have been getting really over the last year has just been, it's been phenomenal. The only, the sad part is that not enough people know about it. But I do want to say that these videos, I couldn't see both videos. I listened to both. They were outstanding. I saw one video during our workshop before, a little sneak preview that Dr. James shared with us. That was amazing. I can't wait to see those out on social media and hear from people out in the community because they are professional. I mean, top-quality videos. So thank you for doing that, Dr. James. I think that's going to be a huge success, like your newsletters. A couple of things real quick. I wanted to triple-check. I guess I made some notes. One, the $780 million that was referenced that the state owes all of the counties, I just wanted to let everybody know, if you didn't hear us talk about it before, when we had our meeting with the officials, our legislative breakfast, we found out that that $780 million is not sitting in a bank account somewhere. It's been spent. So we commented during our workshop and let everyone know and let the press know that the only way we're going to get that money is that the state's going to have to appropriate that money, which means they're going to have to raise taxes or they're going to have to find it somewhere and then give it to the schools who are entitled to it legally. I did want to mention that. The other thing I wanted, I was curious because this past week, there was an article, I think it was the past week, in the Stanley News and Press. And I started getting a lot of calls, and when I was, or not calls, I was getting texts. And when I was reading my texts, I thought I had woken up in an alternate universe. And the reason why I say that is because I saw a link to this article, and there's a gentleman who's running for office, and he was going to great lengths to talk about, I would guess or suggest, the lack of CTE and career classes opportunities for students in Stanley County as well as military. And so I was grateful to Dr. James. I thought it was perfect timing. Board members and the people that attend the board meetings every month know and have heard repeatedly how strong our CTE career and course offerings are. And I'm hoping that the SNAP is going to run an article about tonight's presentation from Dr. James because I thought it was a fantastic refresher. The work that Dr. James and the school system is doing is unbelievable, on par with Mecklenburg and any other county in the state. It's amazing. We have a phenomenal ROTC program at West Stanley. I don't know, maybe some people maybe thought that went away. It hasn't, and that is open to students around the county, so you don't have to only attend West Stanley to be a member of JROTC. At least, that's my understanding. So to me, I was very concerned coming into the meeting. I thought something had happened on my travels. I was glad to hear that that was not the case. It was just somebody hadn't been paying attention. And so I do want to also point out that Richcrest, I'm glad that came up. I'm glad that the information came out about the capacities tonight. Dr. James, thank you for doing that. I know you had a lot of help and assistance from Mr. Bowers and other people. But the reality is, is that we are seeing growth, and I thought it was interesting because people have been talking not only about Stanley County but about the state of North Carolina and all this capacity and people not moving into the state and enrollment going down. And it just struck me, how on earth could Wake County and all these other counties be applying for waivers and concerned and going to the General Assembly to say that they're going to run out of room if we have, if we have all these empty seats? So I don't know. I haven't seen trainloads of kids riding into the state. So maybe, maybe there's a disconnect between reality and people have an agenda. So anyway, it was a very informative night. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over, turn it back to you, Chairman Poole. Thank you so much. I appreciate the job you're doing and everybody else on the board. I think we've made a lot of progress in the last two years since the last election and the last four years since the last election, and I'm looking forward to serving with you guys into the next term.
Okay, Mr. Graves, we're going to go into closed session here when we finish our comments, and if you want to be involved in that, we'll have to disconnect and re-hook you up in there, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Crump, you're up.
Well, I would like to make a comment on the life changer award that we were awarded. One of three counties in the nation is pretty outstanding. And although that is an incredible award, I'm not surprised because the community of Stanley County, all the small communities within Stanley County are so, so strong. And so it doesn't surprise me that we had 18 nominations within this community because we back each other up. And when things are happening that get people riled up, people show up to meetings and they make things happen. And one thing that happened was Oakboro got opened back up, you know, a couple of years ago. And look at that fantastic presentation today. Thank you for that. That was very exciting to see all of the things that are going on at Oakboro and then possibly to add a Montessori program coming up. There are just so many things. I'm almost, I really feel overwhelmed right now, listening to all of the opportunities our students have here. I have been paying attention. I have been here and seeing all of the things that we have offered, but when you see it in this magazine, and I'd like to ask this question, Dr. James, where is this available that people can grab it?
We can definitely make it available. We're actually putting out our first winter magazine in businesses throughout the county so we can actually put these up too. So that's not a problem. We can, we have a marketing class that can actually get these out.
Is this on the website currently?
We can get it on the website, absolutely.
All right, this is great. This is a magazine, Career Pathways, and it, I can't wait to look at it further when I get home. The videos were fantastic. I cannot wait to share those. Are those links going to be available where we can put it out on Facebook and Twitter and other places?
It's on the website.
Okay. Will it be shareable?
Yes, we'll make it shareable.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to just make one comment. All those capacities that you shared, that was very informative. We saw it coming, and I did look up to see if there was one gentleman that was still here and present for that capacity presentation, but he had gone. So I hope that he'll go back and watch this.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, I won't repeat everything, just echo what my fellow board members have already said. And for the sake of time, I'll just try to keep it short. I will say, when we first started talking about the Montessori program, I was a little bit skeptical because I was sitting here, honestly, at our work session thinking, you know, I don't want to be the Jack of all trades and the master of none. We're, I mean, we're adding programs non-stop. And I will tell you, when I sat there and I heard Lynn explain everything and talk about it, and then I went with my wife and my daughter, I don't know how she sat still for that entire meeting, but she did. And she keeps talking about going back to big school. But with Ms. Dombrowski presenting, I completely have faith in everyone. I mean, I know you guys aren't just going to throw something together and, you know, just to say we have a Montessori program. I know we're going to do it. We're going to do it right. And I have faith in all you guys that, and Dr. James, that he's going to ensure that that happens. So I do, I would like to thank you all for all the hard work you're putting into that and for, you know, when it comes to the Montessori, when it comes to the Oakboro STEM, and even when it comes to the tuition issue. I think as a school system, you like to say you want to run as a business, but you have so many policies and statutes that kind of tie you down that you can't really run like a business a lot of times. But what we can do is offer what our customers want, and that's what we're doing, whether it be expanding our customer base by reaching out to those in other counties or keeping our customers loyal by offering more to keep them here in our system. And I'm just proud of all of our guys for doing that. I mean, you guys are amazing with all you do. And also, one quote that Dr. James had tonight that just stuck in my head and it won't leave, "If you can't find it in Stanley County, you aren't going to find it anywhere." And that's the truth. And lastly, you know, I think we all hear a lot of talk about, you know, that are kind of disparaging comments about our school system, you know. You hear good things, especially when you're in board meetings or work sessions. You hear about all the good things that are happening, but when you go out in the community, you constantly feel like your system's getting torn down by those same community members that should be wanting to build it up. But, you know, Dr. James always talks about Union County is looked upon as the pinnacle of education in North Carolina. And Union County had 91% of their schools meeting or exceeding growth last year. Stanley County had 95%. So, you know, you can take that for what it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Ms. Watson.
Well, all I can say is wow. This has been probably one of our best meetings, with all the information and everything. And I just want to say, I'm very, very proud to be a board member. I'm very proud of this board for all that we've done for the last couple of years, and we've worked together. We might not always agree on everything, but we, you know, respect each other and have done a good job. And it's just amazing what we're doing here. Everything is great. I mean, we have, it's just wonderful, just wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a number of remarks I'd like to make, but due to the late hour and in the essence of time, I'll reserve those till next morning.
No, I'm going to make it quick. Thank you, Mr. Plummer. I love that presentation and everything from Montessori to the e-learning. Thank you for that. And Ms. Dombrowski, you know that, okay, I hold you way up here, so thank you for that presentation and all and for all that you're doing. And for all of our administrators and others that are sitting here, and you look so energized. Anyway, have a good night. I'm going to see somebody tomorrow, I think at Richfield Bright and Early. Thank you.
I've got several comments I'd like to make. I'll try to make them as brief as possible. I think sometimes, over the last couple of years, we felt like we, I don't know the rest of the board members, but I've been doing this a good while, and it sort of feels like I've been on a runaway train and I'm trying to hold on. It's been moving so fast, but it's fascinating, and it's been a good thing. I think I can die in peace now. We may see Richcrest get back open. It looks like we're heading in that direction. And I was on the board when that got closed, and it was a very stressful time for the community, very heart-wrenching when you see little kids crying because of schools. And that has ever been burned in the back of my brain, and I hoped I'd live long enough to see it come back to, come back around. And I think this, hopefully tonight, this is the start of it. I've been maligned by a lot of people, blamed for the school closing down, but nothing can be further from the truth. I can walk you through the archives and I fought tooth and nail. And of course, Mr. Chance, he suffered through that time. It was some stressful times back then when we were going through that. But it's not anything you want to do, and I'm just thankful that we're on the verge of, and the growth is coming. I was amazed at the end of St. Martin Road and the edge of Oakboro, had like 36 units went in there. And I mean, there's already cars parked in the driveway of those places. And somebody told me they went down in that area the other day, and there were kids all playing out in the streets. So they're going to be in the school system. So growth is coming, and I'm glad to see the possibility of that take place, and we'll assist you any way we can. Today is my birthday. I'm 69 years old. I had hair when I started this job, and I don't have much left, so I don't know. But I've enjoyed every minute of it. We, our next board meeting will be Tuesday, March 3rd. It'll be in the Commons Room. It'll be here. It'll be on election night, but we have never yet moved it from that night. We've all, we've had, this is not the first time we've had board meetings on election night. So we'll be here in this room. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A6, for student matters under North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A1, and attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statutes 143318.11A3.
Moved to going to closed session.
Motion to go into closed session by Mr. McIntyre. Do we have a second?
Second.
All the way around, all right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, take about a three-minute break-in route. I know you're going to accomplish that, Mr. Graves. We need this in here. We need to take that in.